February meeting, all of this time, shall we stand for invocation, pledge allegiance to the flag, please? Yes.
Let us pray. Dear Father in heaven, we ask that you would watch over us and protect us, guide us and lead us in everything that we do and say here tonight. May we do everything within your will, dear God, because all things are in your hands. We ask now that you would bless this time that we serve together and that you would watch over each one of us, guide us home safely when we leave this place tonight. We ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a call of seven out of seven. And the next on our agenda is the approval of our work agenda for this evening.
Still moved. Second.
If the motion is second that our work agenda be approved this evening, are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. Next is the approval of the minutes.
Still move.
I'll second.
If the motion is second that the minutes be approved, are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. The next agenda is the claims.
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is second that the claims be approved, are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. The next agenda will be announcements, are there any announcements? Were there any presentations, Ms. Ruth Wallace?
Good evening, give me just a moment to get plugged in. Okay, wonderful, thank you for allowing me the time to speak this evening. I just want to give you an annual update on what we've been doing in Virginia Cooperative Extension. To start with, I want to just remind you of who works over in our extension office. We have our unit administrative assistant Rochelle Claybo, Jennifer Ligon is our A and R agent. And she was planning to be here today to speak with you as well, but she was in a beef quality assurance training that ran over. So she'll probably wander in before the meeting is over. Of course, I work with 4H and then we have a program assistant who works about sixteen hours a week, Katerina Thomas, who works primarily with after-school programs and our preschool school enrichment. We are also served by Jason Fisher, who is our area forestry agent. He is completely state-funded, but he provides guidance on private woodland areas, marketing, estate planning, timber harvesting and so forth for Buckingham County. We have a number of volunteers who serve on our Extension Leadership Council. You'll see them listed here, we do have two vacant positions at present. One is a member of your board, Don Matthews was serving in that for us last year. And you'll see later on your agenda for tonight, a request for someone to serve in that role for this coming year. I do have to apologize, I should have made that request in January, but it completely slipped my mind, so I'm here today. We usually meet three times a year, our next meeting is actually this coming Thursday. And we always do working lunch meetings to try to make it a little bit more convenient for those who are working during the day. The purpose of our Extension Leadership Council is to help extension remain relevant and meet the needs of the community, so to enhance the awareness of the community by having various representatives from the community organizations help keep their ear to the ground. Our chair, Sherrell Salisbury, is here in the audience today as well. Just to speak a little bit about our agriculture and natural resources programming, and I won't do this as much justice as Jennifer would have had she been here today. But she works on a number of grants for our community. They're usually larger statewide and regional grants, of which she is able to get a portion to come into Buckingham and has worked with a significant amount going directly to producers in our community, which has in turn helped them increase profitability and helped them with their managing their cattle herds. She does a number of different programs ranging from cattle-wise, women in agriculture, helping producers get their beef quality assurance certification, doing estate planning particularly for farmland. So lots of different things, she works with people to get their personal and commercial pesticide applicators licenses and a lot more related to that. One of the other things she does is she serves as the advisor to our local Buckingham Cattlemen's Association and helps them and helps those members to just understand beef nutrition, marketing, improve their productivity and eventually their bottom line. She's done some remarkable things with actually getting BCA now as a registered trademark and selling the meat locally down at, I know Spring Hollow and there was one other location, which I can't remember at the moment off the top of my head. Moving on to 4H to look at some of our 4H program highlights, we have seventy-three enrolled 4H volunteers in Buckingham County as of last, the twenty-twenty-three year. We actually have more volunteers than that, but we don't always capture our enrollment data on our one-time or occasional volunteers. We have eighteen enrolled teen volunteers and just under fifteen-hundred enrolled 4H youth in the county. Our delivery modes include clubs, school enrichment, after-school and out-of-school programs like school break, winter break, spring break, that type of thing, day and residential camps and one-day workshops. So, oops, I went too fast. So thinking about some of our camping program, we have a very robust camping program. I'm not going to read everything on this slide for you, but suffice it to say, we have a good number of youth involved in our camping program. Junior camp is from ages nine to thirteen with trained teen leaders and adult leaders. And Clover Bud Camp is for ages five through, five through eight. I will point out, just to brag for a moment, we consistently have between thirty and forty percent of the Clover Bud Camp enrollment for the whole 4H center, because that camp is a regional camp in that service area. We also hold day camps every summer and all of these camps help teach youth various life skills like independence, belonging, teamwork, conflict resolution and an awareness and appreciation for nature. Some of our major program areas of emphasis are leadership, citizenship, environmental education, school enrichment, foods and nutrition, horse and livestock programs, we actually have a horse club and a livestock club that are both led by volunteers. We do a lot in science, technology, engineering and math areas as well as healthy habits, which includes stress management. We've seen a lot of a need for stress management, reduction in anxiety, mental health with our youth here lately. And then our Clover Bud program continues to blossom. This past fall, we were able to start a brand-new Clover Bud Club led by four adult volunteers. In summary, 4H provides a developmental context, a place, an area, an entity where youth can grow and thrive. I want to thank you and I want to also mention one other thing I don't have on my slide, two other things I don't have on my slide. I mentioned volunteers earlier, combining our 4H volunteers plus a handful of ag volunteers. Our volunteers in twenty-twenty-three contributed over seventy-two thousand dollars worth of volunteer time according to independentsector.org, which states how much an hour's worth of volunteer time is worth. And then also for every dollar that you guys invest in extension, and we certainly appreciate the investment you make, you get a return on your investment of two dollars and forty-nine cents. With that, do you guys have any questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. I'm going to change the agenda, I hate to see these men standing all this time during the meeting, so I'm going to change the agenda for presentation. Consideration of a resolution opposing the state action required, requiring a permit for hunting dogs. Okay, Carl, you got that?
Before tonight, we have a resolution of the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors opposing any requirements of obtaining permit to hunt with dogs. This resolution goes, whereas Buckingham County is a community with rich and storied tradition of hunting and where the use of dogs and hunting has been longstanding practice, deeply ingrained in the cultural heritage of this area and whereas hunting with dogs is not only a method of wildlife management, but also a communal activity that strengthens bonds with our community, contributes to our local economy and supports outdoor education and whereas there is under consideration by the Virginia General Assembly action to require hunters who use dogs to obtain permits for those hunting dogs and whereas such a requirement represents an unnecessary burden from regulation that infringes upon our traditional practices and our local autonomy and whereas the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors believes that matters affecting local traditions and managing local wildlife should be primarily under the jurisdiction of local governance, allowing for the regulations to reflect the unique needs, traditions and perspectives of the local community and whereas the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors is committed to the preservation of our local heritage, the promotion of outdoor activities that foster community engagement and respect for our natural environment and the unnecessary intrusion of state regulations to local matters. Now therefore be resolved that the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses a strong opposition to any requirements of obtaining a permit to hunt with dogs that urges the state legislator not to adopt such proposal and a lot of its potential impacts on local traditions, autonomy and the well-being of our rural community. And be it further resolved that the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors calls upon our state Senator John J. McGuire and state delegate Tom Garrett to oppose such amendments and to work collaboratively with local governments to ensure that any new regulations on hunting practices are developed in consideration of local customs, input and governance. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to state Senator John J. McGuire and delegate Tom Garrett and members of the Finance and Appropriations Committee for the Senate and the Appropriations Committee of the House of Delicates as an expression of the will of the people of Buckingham County Board of Supervisors and his call to preserve the rights of traditions that are essential to our community's identity and the way of life.
Do you have any hunter present, you have anything to say, do y'all agree with that resolution? All hunters agree with the raise your hand, I can't see everybody. We want to, we want to let you know we're here to support y'all. And if that's good, thank you for raising your hand, we appreciate it. Board members, what is your pledge?
Still move, you approve.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We had a close vote in Richmond today, but Senator McGuire texted me that we won a vote twenty-one to twenty. I guess what they say is close in horseshoes, but we won by one vote. They didn't get their way in Richmond today. And I found it quite appalling that a senator from Fairfax, three hours from here and a hundred and four miles from here, can tell us what is best to do in our own county. And I hope, Mr. Birch is here from the Dog Alliance tonight. If you have any questions about what's going on in Richmond, you can talk to him and I think Mr. McGuire is in rope. He voted in favor of a dog hunters today and maybe we can reach out to delegate Garrett as well. But thank you for coming out and I hope it sends a message back to Richmond, thank you.
Amen. We ought to put that letter, tell them leave Buckingham alone, man, they don't be in the city. All right, board members, what is your pledge? This gentleman, he has anything to say, Cameron?
Mr. Birch, did you want to make any comment on anything going on?
Will you come up here, sir?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to thank you for this. We still face a fight in Senate Finance, but by the grace of God, I believe that we will have the votes to defeat it. We thank you for your leadership. Hunting is important to all of rural Virginia and should be important to all of Virginia, even Fairfax County. I do thank you very much, God bless you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve.
We want to thank the hunters for coming out and that board, what is your pledge?
Make a motion, approve it.
If the motion and secondly, we approve this resolution, all in favor?
Can you come up here? There you go.
Seven, yes.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Chairman Chambers, I just want y'all guys to know that this right here is probably the most pro-dog hunting board that this county's ever had. Most of us on here are still hunters or still dog hunt or have dog hunted in the past and we're going to do everything we can to protect our tradition in this county. So I see a lot of my buddies back there that hunt with me and guys that I grew up with and we run dogs together for years and I just want everybody to know that my family traces back eleven, twelve generations in this county and they dog hunted and we're going to keep on dog hunting. I don't care what they do down there, so.
I'm going to say to my hunters, y'all keep them hands in case y'all go to Fairfax. Thank y'all again for coming, thank y'all gentlemen for coming. All right, Mr. Davis. We'll take a two-minute break, Mr. Davis.
Good evening, gentlemen, I'll try to be as quick as possible. I don't have a presentation or anything visual for you guys, I understand you have a lot of business to get into tonight. But I did feel it important to, to talk to you guys a little bit about twenty-twenty-three. I think with our department and I'll quote Brother Paul Moore for this, transparency is important. So I want to try to provide that tonight. But the first thing I'd like to talk to you about is some of our accomplishments in the last calendar year. First off, our emergency management coordinator, he's sitting back there, Charles Kirby had a pretty major milestone. He has achieved the Emergency Management Basic Academy credentialing from FEMA and the Emergency Management Institute up in Maryland. Just to put it into perspective, it's the same hour commitment as somebody who gains like, you know, their EMT or paramedic certification. So for his discipline that he provides to this county, he is officially credentialed to do so and actually the first one on staff in this county to have achieved that, so I wanted to provide him that recognition. Moving, transitioning into the EMS side, total calls for service or reports generated for service was two-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-eight. And that's up about a hundred to two-hundred calls from last year. Some of those reports are, you know, motor vehicle accidents where we have multiple patients in one, from one report type thing. But still, it's very busy, on average, it's seven calls per day. And then when your, when your average call turnaround time is two to three hours, that kind of puts it into perspective. Our people are busy throughout the day. Of, of those twenty-five-hundred calls, sixty-six resulted in transportation to the hospital, the others being, you know, patient treated and released or refused care or is just a standby or we were canceled en route. Another impressive statistic that I'd like to share with you guys, so when we say we code somebody, that's somebody who's dead. There's, there's no heartbeat and we do what we can for them and that's called coding them. During that process, if we can get a heartbeat back, we document that as ROSC, return of spontaneous circulation. So out of all of the calls that we worked, we coded somebody on, fifty-six percent of those we achieved ROSC in. So I think the return on investment in terms of the advanced care that you guys have supported us to provide shows there. A large thing that you guys deal with from your constituents is being able to go to where they want to go if we take them to the hospital. So to put some numbers to that, out of those twenty-five-hundred calls and seventeen-hundred transports, eight-hundred-and-ninety-five of them went to Southside, five-hundred-and-forty-four went to UVA, two-hundred-and-twenty to Martha Jefferson, twenty-eight to Lynchburg General and one to Johnston Willis. So that's a lot of, a lot of trips to Charlottesville in one year. Another big thing that I'd like to report out with you guys, revenue recovery, money in the bank after fees paid to the folks that do our billing and stuff. We, we were able to cross the million-dollar threshold last calendar year, so we brought in a million dollars true net income to the county. So we're happy about that, that's up about a hundred grand from last year. We've, we've increased by about a hundred grand to two-hundred grand annually for the last three years since we, we became involved in twenty-twenty. Other large things that I wanted to mention, obviously our partnership with Arvonia Fire Department, we call it Station Three. Smashing success, I think everybody's happy from their side to our side, to the community members. I have not heard one negative thing from anybody, so we're really happy about that, appreciate the support there. I think you guys have heard us mention RSI, rapid sequence induction to, you know, where we can sedate and paralyze somebody so that we can then innovate them if they're about to lose their airway. We rolled that program out in September, also not a common program, especially in a county like ours. So the fact that we have it is noteworthy and since rolling it out, we've done almost ten of them and have achieved some really solid patient outcomes because of that. So it's a program that you guys support it and invest it in financially and faith and we've already seen a return on the investment there, so we appreciate that. To accompany that, we've got your, the ventilators and the IV pumps, which were purchased with various grant funds or even some remaining COVID money. They support all that advanced life support stuff. One more thing we started doing, thanks to Kirby and Captain Plum, is a leave-behind Narcan program. So people overdosing on opioids and we go out and revive them, it's really common nowadays. We now have a program where we can leave more Narcan behind with them, you know, to try to save a life and get that Narcan into them even before we get there or law enforcement gets there because Sheriff's Office and State Police are doing a lot of that also. Lastly, our doctor that oversees us, Dr. Perina, allowed us to write and implement our own care protocols and some medications. This is impressive because previously we were following care protocols written for the UVA area, short response times. We have very extended response times, so more aggressive protocols have helped lead to some of these better patient outcomes. We did achieve back in the summer an RSF grant of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that's supposed to be fifty-fifty of the cost of an ambulance, so the ambulance is being built currently thanks to that grant and you, and you guys agreeing to support the other fifty percent of that. It, it won't be done for another two years. The other thing some of you guys are familiar with, one of the twenty-twenty units was involved in a motor vehicle accident a couple of years ago now. It was total lost, but just the box on it was messed up, so the chassis, cabin chassis was still in good shape. We tried to get that to become another ambulance again, but none of the ambulance companies would fool with it because it was on a salvage title. So we did the next best thing and let a local vendor build a flatbed for it and now we have a really impressive kind of utility truck available to anybody who needs it within the county's public safety or even county system. And, and so an F five, twenty-twenty F five fifty with forty thousand miles on it, you know, and we spent twenty-seven thousand dollars on it in total. Pretty decent if you think about it. Next thing up, the UTV we got from that Firehouse Subs Grant, a hundred percent grant-funded. We put that thing in service and like the next week, we were getting a guy that had fallen out of his tree stand out of the woods with it. And then a few weeks later, somebody who was hunting and had an episode and, and we needed to go in there and get him out, we were able to do so. And so that, that asset has, has come into some good use for us a few times already. I did want to take a moment to mention the fact, you know, most of you guys were here back in twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty when we were up here presenting the idea of doing the county involvement. And to, to, to date, by the way, Carl and I can best figure, those financial projections that we put out there, the, the money that we would need generated to support the agency still hold true. And, and we've had the, the fortune of using COVID money and Dominion money to, to do that in the, in the history. But I just wanted to, to say that those of us that were on the planning side of this thing, I think, did okay. Mr. Allen, you know, all of us, I think we kind of punched some numbers out there that, like I said, still we can feel pretty confident in and I hope that instills confidence in the future from, from you guys. So enough good stuff, well, not enough good stuff, but moving into some hard, some not-so-feel-good stuff. Back over the summer, we had a number of staffing issues, had about three staffing vacancies plus some people out on medical leave, so five operational vacancies for a number of months there. So we had a handful of us who stepped up and worked a lot of extra to make it happen and we made it happen. But what you'll see there is some extra overtime expenditures and some under expenditures in the salaries and wages, you know, because of those vacancies. one as is. I mean, it was, it was one of the next ones to go anyway, so. But the other thing, the FDA has told hospitals that they cannot stock medications to local EMS people anymore. We have to prepare to do it ourselves. There, we were hopeful, at, at the county level, we were hopeful the state would step in and help us and create some sort of grant. But I don't know if you guys saw on the news where the state was misappropriated, was it 33 million? $33 million for the Office of EMS? So any assistance from them, we're not counting on. I don't have a dollar figure for you at this point, but we're looking at this fall, that's going to be something we have to absorb probably. It, it will be reflected, my best guess will be reflected in my budget request to you guys this year, but that is coming. Kind of building off of what I mentioned about the State Office of EMS, just to let you know, every year we get roughly 18,000 from For Life. That's not coming this year because of that, that, those financial issues. They also will not do any RSF grants coming up. They usually put up two cycles annually. We always apply to all of them. Sometimes we get something like the 175,000 last summer, sometimes we don't. But we know for sure that's not even going to be an opportunity for us coming, coming up. So they promised they will still honor that grant they issued us in the summer. Whenever that ambulance gets done, they're promising they'll still pay us that 175,000. So keep my fingers crossed on that one. And then the final thing, they, they put on a big symposium conference every year down at Virginia Beach. It's a way that we get a lot of our continuing education hours every year. They're not doing that. So another thing that we as an agency have to absorb, and then some other couple thousand dollar things here and there, like for software and apps and things that we use a lot, that we have to absorb, all of that will be reflected come budget season, and I, I want to get out of your hair now. Lastly, I, I just want to plant a very lighthearted seed tonight, but the, the notion to try to look into making Station Three 24/7 staffed down in Arvonia. Right now it's only staffed 12 hours, Monday through Friday. So there's every night plus every weekend is unstaffed. And the, the, I would like for you guys to begin putting out feelers amongst your constituents, and that's a third unit for the whole county if it were to be needed. But I know we internally are already starting to look into that. But we got a lot to traverse coming up, and I don't mean to burden you more, but I would be doing a disservice to the county for what I do if I did not say that. So more to come on that. But that's all I got. Do you guys have anything for me?
Any questions, Mr. Davis?
I just want to thank Cody for, we had a fire call the other week. Ambulance was only seen like three, four minutes. That's a big difference than coming from Dale on a Glenmore to us. Accident, three, four minutes, squad was only seen. That's the difference between life and death for somebody. And right now, everybody, I, I got a lot of my constituents sitting out here, and everybody that I've talked to is happy with the squad being back down. It's always been a squad in Arvonia, and everybody's happy with it. So, thank you.
I saw something on television the other day where y'all was up in Nelson, Canada. Saw me on fire?
Oh, it's the Glenmore Fire Department took some crews and assets out there, yeah.
And they was committing what y'all had done.
Yeah, they, they did a good job. I can't take that credit, but those guys deserve it.
It was Buckingham anyway, yeah.
Yeah, right. Y'all supporting it.
How many, I want to pop a hand. Thank, anybody else got anything, Mr. Davis? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank y'all.
How many public hands we got? Five? Okay. Next, we have a public comment. You got three minutes to speak. We got five signed up, you say? Who's the first one?
Ken DeHahnemann, District Five. And Doug Oliver will be next.
Good evening. Ken DeHahnemann, District Five. I'm actually here tonight in support of your constituents. I know there are people here who are going to talk to you tonight about how much they care about their property and how much they hope that you'll help to protect it. So I think, well, I think they can speak for themselves. I don't have to say much about that. Also in recognition of Black History Month, which we have right now, thanks to Carter G. Woodson, thing to be proud of, I think, for Buckingham County. And just to give an update for everyone, I attended Lobby Day and spoke with Senator Maguire and Delegate Garrett, and they were pretty supportive of Buckingham. But at any rate, I continue to have conversations with them. And the two bills that were related to the gold mining have both passed through the House, so they'll be going to the Senate. That's House Bill 84 and 85. That was a, I think that was a success for us, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Douglas Oliver, District Six. And Pete Kaposinski will be next.
Good evening. Ken DeHahnemann, District Five. I'm actually here tonight in support of your constituents. I know there are people here who are going to talk to you tonight about how much they care about their property and how much they hope that you'll help to protect it. So I think, well, I think they can speak for themselves. I don't have to say much about that. Also in recognition of Black History Month, which we have right now, thanks to Carter G. Woodson, thing to be proud of, I think, for Buckingham County. And just to give an update for everyone, I attended Lobby Day and spoke with Senator Maguire and Delegate Garrett, and they were pretty supportive of Buckingham. But at any rate, I continue to have conversations with them. And the two bills that were related to the gold mining have both passed through the House, so they'll be going to the Senate. That's House Bill 84 and 85. That was a, I think that was a success for us, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Douglas Oliver, District Six. And Pete Kaposinski will be next.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm gonna, I could go on this subject, I'm getting ready to talk about y'all forever, but I know it's going to be a long night, so I'm gonna make it brief. But take you on a little trip. As a primary student at Arvonia Primary School, I can't remember sometimes what I did last year, but I can remember this trip, a trip, field trip, historical significance. And I took it again today. So as like a seven or eight-year-old, it seemed like you were, it was forever. You went way somewhere. It was less than eight miles on the round trip. That trip was to the birthplace of Carter G. Woodson. He was born on December 19th, 1875. The historical records are going to say in New Canton, but if you lived there, you know he was born in Liberty. Dr. Carter G. Woodson was a scholar whose dedication was celebrating historic contributions of Black people. Dr. Woodson's devotion to showcase those contributions of Black Americans' boiled fruit in 1926, when he launched Negro History Week, the second week of February, to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln, which happens to be today, and Frederick Douglass, which I believe is February 14th. Dr. Woodson's concept was later expanded into Black History Month, marked every February nationally since 1976. I thought it was appropriate in this month, on this day, to remind the citizens of the great accomplishments of Dr. Woodson, a Buckingham and Virginia native and a national treasure. The National Park Service has acquired the row house for which he resided for like two and a half decades, and unfortunately, where he passed from a heart attack in 1950. They are currently under renovations, and the plan is to open it in the fall of this year to the public as a national, not national park, but I think they call it a national historical site. But the question I want to ask is, can the county and the Commonwealth do more to recognize the accomplishments of Dr. Woodson? That's my question. And there's a quote I'd like to leave with you, since you are the Board of Supervisors, from Dr. Woodson. Dr. Woodson said, "You cannot serve people by giving them orders as to what to do. The real servant of the people must live among them, think with them, feel for them. The servant of the people, unlike the leader, is not on a high horse, trying to carry the people to some designated point, to which he would like to go for his own advantage. The servant of the people is down among them, living as they live, doing what they do, and enjoying what they enjoy. He should have more humility than those for whom he serves." Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Pete Kaposinski, District Three. And Janice McNeil will be next.
Evening, Supervisors. Mr. Chairman. Pete Kaposinski, District Three. I'm here on my own behalf, that's for the record. I want to talk to you. I'm, I'm real pleased to see that everybody on the board here believes that county business should remain in the county. Because I'll tell you right now, House Bill 636, Senate Bill 567, and Senate Bill 697 has been put in front of the legislature to take county land use decisions away from the county and put them with the state. This has to do more with, with solar for the time being, but believe me, that's just the tip of the iceberg. What I would tell you is that, you know, perhaps we need solar in our community. I can't tell you we don't. There are places in our community where we might be able to put these solar installations, but it's a county decision. It is not a state decision. So quite frankly, Mr. Chambers, you and the board and the commission, if we don't do something to unravel, to dismantle these laws, then people like Hodson or anybody else who comes here to ask permission to lay solar panels or anything else in our county will be taken away from the board and the commission. That decision will be made by the state. Those decisions belong in the county. Please pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Janice McNeil, District Five. And David Ball will be next.
That's the last one, David Ball?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Janice McNeil. My husband and I live over on Georgia Creek in Buckingham. We moved to Buckingham in 2011 after my husband retired from the Army. And unfortunately, over the last few years, we have seen the Republican Party attack this board, our elected officials, and some of our community members. Tonight, I am announcing that I will be running as Chairwoman for the Republican Party of Buckingham County. I want to heal our party and move past the events of the last year to come together as neighbors and friends to unify our party and our community in a professional and a productive manner. My husband and I are both avid hunters. We support hunters and hunting with dogs, and we will love to see us and the hunters, legally and ethically, get these deer out of my crops and out of my garden. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Ball, District Three. And that will be up.
Looks like we lost a little cotton end on this thing, but David Ball, District Three. Good evening, gentlemen. Listening to everything tonight, I had more that I was going to talk about, but I think taking into consideration what Cody was saying, you know, one of the things I can analyze from what I've observed is a lot of times we have firefighters, because they're volunteers, who are available evenings and weekends, whereas we're the new third EMT station. You have them during the daytime, but there's nobody at nighttime. So there really, really, really needs to be a balance in this because if, and this has been an issue that came up long before the two new people were on the board, where citizens were having issues because fires were occurring during the daytime, nobody was there to respond to it, and then, you know, it's a loss of property, and that's very unfortunate for people here in the county. I mean, consider any one of yourselves. If you're, you're out working during the daytime and come home and find your total loss, that's, that's a major consideration, major concern, and a major impact for any, any family in this county. So I know there needs to be more to balance out the needs for both EMS and fire response. And I, I'm more than certain that just three stations with EMTs is not enough to cover the entire county, as big as the county is. Because the population is so dispersed in this county, you really have to be strategic in implementations and locations. And I've often said that we need to have something on the west side of the town of Buckingham, where the courthouse is, to cover that region, because that seems to be the area that has the least coverage, but, you know, at the same time, there is quite a bit of activity that's developing in that area. So from that standpoint, I think there is a great need for things to increase. As for the deer hunters, statistically, it's decreasing because of young people not going out and hunting. And if you want to, go to Fairfax. They have a controlled hunt, because they have overpopulation of deer in places like Huntley Meadow Parks, one of the largest parks in that county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Emerson, I'm gonna change, go to, to zoning. I'm gonna turn it over to you now.
Mr. Chairman, do we have anything from VDOT though?
I don't see him here.
Bill King's here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. King. I live with Scott Frederick.
We got him for the next three months.
Okay, all right. Apologizing, Mr. King.
Yeah, I don't look like Scott.
Mr. Chairman and board members, thank y'all for letting me speak with you tonight. Scott has taken a special duty assignment for, at Lynchburg, for the next 90 days, so I'm it. So I will do the best I can for you.
Yes, sir. Good to have you.
Thank you. Mainness-wise, we, as you know, we had gravel roads, we've been going all pieces from the winter, so the guys have been doing, putting down stone for the last two weeks on our gravel roads in the, in the area. We'll continue until we get them into some kind of decent shape or until Mother Nature checks up a little bit for us. Hopefully, we'll have a early spring, but old bones don't feel like it's going to be, so we still got a snow coming. We are cutting trees and getting those out the way as we can. We got a contract, I see Supervisor Davis had mentioned about some dead trees last time. We got a contract with critical removal that we're doing for fallable ourselves. As soon as that's up and running, we're going to get to removing more trees as we find them, because we can manage the contract ourself. So we'll work through that. Supervisor Gillum, on that bridge issue, I did reach out to the bridge section, and they said they inspected on December the 5th of 2023. It's currently on a 24-month inspection frequency. It's posted at 27 tons, but it's probably going to go down. They're finding a piece of section, this steel beam, that is not gone but bad shape. So they're going, they're going to check on that again. They did some patching on it back in summer of 2022. We have instructed the superintendent of the area to keep an eye on it so we can keep it patched out, and hopefully that'll, until they figure out what they're going to do with it from the bridge section.
Yep, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. I'm trying to go through my notes from last time, make sure we're touching up everything. I will bring up, Scott said, remind y'all that we definitely need to set up a work session in March for the six-year plan, so kind of keep that on your radar. And another one, had I reached out, I probably reached, had to reach out, Carl tomorrow, Mr. Carter. The six-year plan, I need, we, we're looking for a resolution to make this thing easy, and excuse me while I'm getting my phone, so I make sure I read the right thing. We'll need from each of the, of y'all for the six-year plan, as a rule rustic, to declare the six-year plan as a rule rustic, rule rustic routes. And as we move forward, we might be able to get all these done. It's a one step easier for us, is getting the funds put in place, and we can open it up to charges and start them a lot sooner, if we can do that. I have the form for Mr. Carter, I'll get with him tomorrow, so if y'all want to vote on that resolution to make all the six-year routes a rule rustic route. on that resolution to make all the six-year routes a rule rustic route. But I can get him more, so if you want to breathe into it more, because I just got it this afternoon, hit it this way. Uh, like I said, excuse me, I'm just trying to get through this thing here best I can. And we do have, we have a patching contractor that, as the weather breaks and asphalt plants do open up, we'll be doing maintenance to, I know Mr. Bryant, you said 602, and a couple other routes, 640, I think I heard from, we'll be doing some surface patching and doing some plant mix, mill and fill. We got him up and ready to go, we just got to wait till we get some plants open, so. And I'm good, any questions for me?
We start with District One, District One?
Just, I'm glad to hear that y'all are going to start getting rid of some of these dead trees on the side of the road, and other than a few potholes, and I know you can't do nothing with them right now, if it's freezing and throwing and all, but it's a few on 610, potholes. Other routes, I think I hit one in Blinky's Road the other day, I thought it knocked my teeth out, but. We're trying to, like I said, we're trying to, at least once a week, you guys get out and catch them up, just depending on how Mother Nature allows. I see where y'all put gravel the other day on Randolph Creek, and that made a big difference on that little road, that little section of dirt road there. Good deal. Other than that, everything's good, Bill. Okay.
District Two? King?
Thank you again for checking on the bridge. Now, yeah, I'll get back to my constituent. I had one person actually call me in my district this week, it's actually in Mr. Allen's district, where the road's at, but it's only in the bell road between Zion Church and the Cumberland Line.
Okay.
The constituent had some problems, and said the road was rough, and that it needed to be repaired.
Okay.
But it's basically between the church and the Cumberland Line, which is in Supervisor Allen's district, which he happened to live in my district. So if you get a chance, would you just ride by there and check on that, please?
Sure will. Like I said, we're going to try to get to a lot of more difference, like I said, if it's snow holes off, they're going to have something to do with our snow money, so we're hoping we're going to be the receiving end of some of that snow money.
Okay.
So if that's the case, we can turn our contractors loose with patching with a whole lot of money, but they won't give us the answer until late March, so.
District Three?
I just want to thank you. I see where y'all put some coal patching, some of the potholes on 640.
Yes, sir.
And the curves up there as well, it was really bad, holding a lot of water and stuff, and I want to thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir.
I have gotten some complaints about school road between Plank Road and 15.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of tractor-trailer cut, trailers cutting through that road, and if you ride through it, the road's really, really narrow, but you can see where people have been driving on the shoulder. And it's my understanding that a lot of them cut through there, you know, shortcut from Plank Road to 15, whatever. So I don't know if there's anything we can look at that, try to widen the road a little bit to make it safer, or?
Yes, sir.
I don't know, whatever you can do to try to alleviate that problem, but I've had quite a few complaints on that road, meeting tractor-trailers, not enough room, having to get in a ditch, so.
Yes, sir. Like I said, the county safety money will reset, so to speak, in the middle of summer, and we can look at using some of that to go and actually do a wedge and widen the road, but it's going to probably take us a few years' step, you know, because we get $50,000 plus, you know, for the county. And time we do that, of course, we got to work the ditches and the pipe to all do the same, so.
I understand, just whatever you can do to try to help alleviate the problem, I would greatly appreciate it.
Yes, sir. We'll take a good look at it as a good candidate for it, you know, if I'm doing that type of work.
Right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
District Four?
Yes, sir, Mr. King. I haven't met you before, but I'm Paul Garrett, I'm District Four Supervisor. I talked with a couple of my constituents about one certain topic, but Mr. Frederick has gotten back to me, and I just got the paperwork on that, so.
Yes, sir.
I'll bring that up again once I go through this paperwork. I hadn't been down that way in a while, but I know I heard a few of my constituents, Twin Creek Road, which is right across from the high school.
Yes, sir.
That's, it used to be a lot of rough patches and all in there, and a lot of chunks out the side of it, on the closer end of 60, really, and kind of in the middle. But people that live up there have really been talking about that. I hadn't been down it lately to see if anything had been done, but I doubt it. And the same issue that Mr. Palmer was talking about with the bigger trucks, we're having that issue on Troublesome Creek Road, on the Route 60 end, on the Route 20 end, the road's a little bit wider and so forth, but on the Route 60 end, the road's a lot narrower, and, you know, that big curve in there, it, you know, it's, just the road is narrow, and it's a lot of problems if anybody has to meet big trucks that go through there, you know, tractor-trailers go through there and all.
Yes, sir.
Especially a lot of them loaded down with wood, and it's tough if you meet somebody on that end especially, but if you, that was the main two things that I had to speak about tonight, and if I hear anymore, I know, you know, that y'all are always easy to contact if I need anything else, so thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
District Five?
Yeah, on Glenmo Road and Wellwater Road, where you make a turn onto Wellwater.
Yes, sir.
There's a big pothole right there, and it's been filled in quite a few times, but I think it needs something more than just crusher run put in it, it needs to be some coal patch or something put in it, because it's just crusher run, it's not holding up.
Okay.
And I need to talk to you a few minutes about Firehouse Road.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'll catch you before you leave it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
District Six there, Mr. King, going there at 20 north?
Yes, sir.
If you pass, cross slope of a bridge on 20, it's a great big oak leaning, just about all the way across the middle of that highway, that, I mean, it's pretty dangerous. As you cross the bridge, go on top of the hill, you can see it.
Okay. That's a tree on top of the hill there?
Yes, sir. District Seven?
Yes, sir, thank you. Oval Route 617, which you could break down part of, that's Copper Mine Road, they have a couple, well, he says up to three real bad curves, and if you meet a tractor-trailer there, in that curve, the trailer, when it comes around, will actually grab the car or vehicle, you know, because the curve is too tight, the hill's too tight. Just wondering if we can get together sometime or another, and look at these curves and see what we can do about fixing them, because it's, I've heard some accidents been happening there, too.
Okay.
And I know a lot of people are afraid of it, so, something to look at, and I'd like to work with you sometime or another.
What it can do is, we'll reach out to our traffic folks and let them do a study for us.
Okay.
And at least get some warning up until we can do something more permanent.
Yes, sir.
At least get some signs of, you know, curvature signs, if we don't have enough there. But we'll take a look at it and take a look, see what's there.
Right.
And go that route.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I hate to go back to a subject that we already covered, but I think a gentleman that drove an hour and a half from the State Assembly, this is not a Democrat or Republican issue, this was a dog hunting issue. I want to, this gentleman drove an hour and a half and just got here a few minutes late. Mr. McGuire, a state senator, voted on behalf of our dog hunters today and made the drive to Buckingham tonight to try to get here before our resolution was done, and I'd just like to commend you on the dog hunting group from Buckingham. Thank you for your vote today, we appreciate it, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you for driving to Buckingham to care about us tonight, to support what we believe in.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Emerson, I'm going to change the agenda, I told you what I wanted to do with you.
Okay, yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I believe that we are going to move Case 23 SUP 336 to be first under public hearings this evening, is that what you mentioned?
That's correct, that's correct, what I said.
This case before you was introduced last month. It does involve Tax Map 16, Parcel 61, with just over 245 acres. It is A1. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit to construct a mechanical equipment shed to house and protect maintenance equipment. There are 10 conditions that are attached to this. They've passed through the Planning Commission with no changes, presented to you last month. The applicant is here to discuss and address any questions that you all may have this evening.
Where's the applicant at? Will you come forward, sir? Thank you for coming. Do any Board members have a question for him, for the applicant? Yeah, no, thank you. And we need to open the public hearing, right?
No one signed up to speak.
No one signed up to speak in the public hearing, so I have to close it. What is the pledge of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve it.
If a motion, a motion and second, we approve the special use permit. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes, thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Welcome. Welcome. Ms. Emerson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the next public hearing case before you is 23 SUP 334. This does involve multiple parcels, Tax Map 43, Parcel 41, Tax Map 54, Parcel 190, Tax Map 54, Parcel 157, Tax Map 43, Parcel 50, Tax Map 43, Parcel 50 Lot A, Tax Map 43, Parcel 51. It's approximately 1,065 acres. These parcels are located both north and south of Blinky's Road, State Route 672, where Bear Garden Creek crosses under the road in the Marshall Magisterial District. This case was presented to you as an introduction last month. It is in an A1 zoning district. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit to allow for the construction and operation of a solar photovoltaic PB modules up to, to produce up to 80 megawatts. The power generated will be linked to the electrical transmission grid by the existing overhead 230 kW high voltage onsite transmission line. There are 30 conditions attached to this special use permit. The applicant, Hodgson Energy, is here on behalf of Mountain Pine Arbonia LLC and Mountain Pine Arbonia II LLC. They're both here with a presentation for.
Okay, they can come forward this time.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Kyle West, I'm a representative of Hodgson Energy. My colleague is just handing out some documents. Maybe before we jump into it, there was a question by Supervisor Gillum last time about the notices and the procedures, and we promised we would get back to you all on that, so before I jump in, I thought I would just address that. We reached out to two land use attorneys that are experts on land use matters in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and both concurred with the county attorney's opinion on the matters that were stated in the previous hearing. That's why we have moved forward tonight to a public hearing. Those opinions are being handed out to you, they're from two separate law firms, and one of the attorneys is the preeminent land use attorney in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and Neil Cosby. And just, just one other comment before we get started, just because I heard some reference to solar and legislation, there's all this big talk. I'd just like it to be stated on the record that Hodgson Energy does not support the legislation that's been introduced in Richmond. We also think land use decisions should happen at the county level. We do not think the state or the SEC should override land use decisions by the county. So, you know, I have attended hundreds and hundreds of hearings like this across the country, and I hope we can continue to keep it at the county level. So we support rejecting that legislation. We don't think it's good for our industry, for the Commonwealth of Virginia, or for any of the counties in the Commonwealth. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started. Our project tonight is called Arbonia Solar. You can go ahead and move on up to the next slide.
Hold one second.
Okay.
We're trying to make sure that the Board can see.
Damn it, Joe's locked up again.
Where you needed to be.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're good to go now? Okay. So again, Kyle West with Hodgson Energy. Hodgson is a national utility scale solar developer. Across the team, there's collective experience of gigawatts of projects successfully developed and constructed. We're active in multiple regions across the country. We have headquarters in New York, in Manhattan, and an office just outside of Richmond, Virginia. I myself am from Richmond, live in Charlottesville, went to University of Virginia, and this is my home state. Next slide. This is our project team. I'm the lead in presenting. We also have Frank Hopkins, a former planner here in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and Kim has come down from New York. She's been leading a lot of our community engagement efforts over the course of many months. Slide, please. So a quick overview, it's an 80-megawatt project. There are no battery storage component proposed for the project. Across the 1,065 acres, we're planning on utilizing approximately 572 acres, so just over 50% of the land that we actually have under purchase or lease option. We'll get to it in a little bit, but we're planning on interconnecting to the transmission line that you see there running north to south over in the northeastern corner of the project. Also, I should state that, you know, if there are any wetlands or cultural or historic resources, we're obviously setting back from those, and accordingly, that creates just natural wildlife corridors, so things can continue to pass through the project area even when it's built. Next slide, please. And that's, this is just zoomed in on it, since you have the map set in front of you, hopefully you have a better view of it. Please peruse that, let me know if you have any questions. Feel free to interrupt me at any time. Next slide. So I spoke on buffering and setbacks, so just get a little bit more granular on the detail. You know, we plan to maintain any and all existing vegetation on the site, and also add supplemental vegetation anywhere it's necessary to preserve the view shed of all the adjacent landowners. In addition to that, we plan on utilizing a 75-foot setback from all property lines, 350 feet from adjacent residential properties, and 50 feet from any public road. The ordinance that we're actually subject to calls for only 50 feet from all property lines, but we wanted to be in accordance with what the Blue Rock RWE project was held to, so we proactively offered up an additional buffer there, and I should note, the ordinance that we're subject to required 300-foot setback from residential properties. We have already come up to 350 feet. So we're already above and beyond what the ordinance that we're subject to calls for. We've done extensive public outreach, which I'll hit in a little bit, and our engineer, Timmons Group, we have a representative from Timmons here tonight, Rick Thomas, who has done the view shed analysis and provided the map set that you have in front of you. Next slide. I spoke to this earlier, but the project's going to maintain a 50-foot buffer from all wetlands, streams, and surface areas. This, again, will create these natural wild- This, again, will create these natural wildlife corridors, so deer and other wildlife can continue to migrate through the site, will utilize native grasses. In fact, it's a best practice to utilize native grasses such that you're stabilizing the ground. You want to do that both erosion and sediment control and stormwater purposes, and a best practice often is to seed the property, the site, before you start construction, because you're then creating stabilization as you go through construction. As you all probably know, a construction site can be vulnerable, so that's a best practice that we propose. I'll probably get in to, I'll save some of the other points for other slides. Next slide, please. So after, you know, if and when we receive a permit this evening, there's still additional work to be done for this project. So most notably, we will either have to go get a permit by rule, which is a state permit that's issued from the, by the Department of Environmental Quality, or the project will receive a certificate of public convenience and necessity, which is issued by the SEC. Both are extraordinarily onerous. So the most common is probably getting the permit by rule, and what it basically is, is a 14-step process where all the, many of the various departments in the Commonwealth are brought in to analyze the project, and you're submitting a lengthy application, and many, many months' process where they're vetting your project. I think some of significance maybe tonight, you know, I'd like to point out that the historic resources, one of the things we've already done, you have in front of you, is a cultural historic resources study. What that means is just from a desktop standpoint, we've already done an analysis of whether or not there are cultural historic resources. There were some areas that were designated as such, and we will be avoiding those. In addition, after this evening, if we move forward, the Department of Historic Resources will take another look at it, and, you know, say for example, you know, Mr. Oliver talked about the CG Woodson grave site, right? If something like that were on our property, we would not be able to impact it. We would have to avoid it, and in some cases, we have to even go beyond that and put mitigating factors around it, like a screening or something to that effect. It's true for any cemetery, any grave site, anything of cultural or historic resources. So we've already done a desktop. We're going to do a survey where people are consultant, will get on the ground, they will walk the whole site, and these are trained professionals that are licensed in the Commonwealth and further designate any cultural historic resources on the site, and then ultimately it's reviewed by the Department of Historic Resources. If they don't deem what we've done as adequate, we can't move forward. So the same kind of rigorous processes are in place from all these various other departments you see. So Conservation and Recreation, Wildlife Resources, and of course, it's managed by the Department of Environmental Quality. Next slide, please. Stormwater, speaking of Department of Environmental Quality, they also manage the stormwater process. Erosion and sediment control is usually at the county level. Stormwater was a big issue back when I started developing solar in Virginia back in 2014. I've probably touched more solar projects than anybody in the Commonwealth. Some people have done it well, and some people haven't. And what's, what's come about, though, is the Commonwealth and the development community has learned some valuable lessons. And so Department of Environmental Quality now takes about a year to process a stormwater management plan. This project will have to go through, through that rigorous process as well. It ultimately will result in things like temporary and permanent stormwater basins on the site, again, the kind of seeding that I spoke to, and other just best practices and mitigating, you know, factors to make sure that the flow of the water remains the same when we're done with our project. Next slide, please. Interconnection, I touched on this. I know there were some questions in the past, and I, it'll probably come up again tonight, about one of our landowners to the north, the Johnny Bigford, who has the parcel to the north, and there was some question about, you know, why was he involved in this project since he's the Planning Commission Chairman? The simple answer is, we needed access to the transmission line. So when we realized that we couldn't get access on the timber track we had back in September 2022, we reached out to Mr. Bigford, and we were able to get a lease option on the property, which in turn allows us to interconnect the project on his property, to interconnect to this 230 KV transmission line. And that also is where our switching station will reside, which is a critical element to any one of these projects. So, you know, we, we can get into that further, but, you know, we needed the land, so we reached out to the landowner who had it, and it happened to be Mr. Bigford. Your transmission lines, you know, they, that, those are there, we're not adding any transmission lines. The voltage actually throughout our project is 34.5 KV, which is a distribution voltage, same as the three-phase lines you have out here on the road. The project substations basically just collect all the, all that distribution voltage and then step it up to the transmission voltage, this, in this case, again, 230 KV. I think that's probably enough on interconnection. Next slide, please. So the estimated time for construction will be 12 to 18 months. There are restrictions already, I know, you know, with the county and that we're agreeing to in our siting agreement, around hours of operation. During, during the operation, this project is very quiet. The only thing that you can hear that's audible inside the fence line are the inverters, and they basically give off a little hum like an industrial refrigerator, but they're set inside the footprint of the project such that if you're outside the fence line, they're inaudible. You cannot hear them. And we also, like any other use, have to be in compliance with the noise restrictions. So, you know, you, you really won't hear anything. In addition to that, it's monitored 24/7. It's surrounded by a six-foot chain link security fence, and it's pretty, basically benign, innocuous, and it just sits there, does its thing. It's not a burden on schools, on, you know, fire, rescue, we just heard from the fire department, you know, we're, we're not going to be calling up saying our home's on fire. It's, we're not sending kids to school, you know, and there's more burden on them, but we will be paying significant taxes and more, which I'll get to in a moment. Finally, we've also submitted a decommissioning plan. The decommissioning plan per state code, it has to be performed by a licensed Virginia engineer, which it was, and it covers the full cost to remove all aspects, all components, all equipment of the solar project. And so that has been submitted to the county for some time, and hopefully you have that as your, as part of your package, if not, happy to get it to you. Oh, I should also state that part of that decommissioning plan comes with an amount for removal, and we will be issuing a bond, a surety bond, for that full amount, which will be held in escrow by the county, not us. So the event, the event that anything were to happen to Hudson or any owner of the project, you know the money's there. Moreover, per state code, that amount is revisited every five years to make sure it's sufficient for removal, right? I mean, we don't, this is a long-term project, we recognize that. Things change, inflation goes up, interest rates goes up, and so we need, we want to make sure the county has the adequate funds to remove this at the end of its life. Next slide, please. The community outreach, you know, we started out doing a door-knocking campaign. We were really trying to target houses that had line of sight. We did not, we speak to a ton of people because a lot of people weren't home, but we did go knock on doors and talk to a number of folks. We visited with business leaders in the area. We learned about the history of, of the area. And then, let's see, oh, and then we sat down with, and were able to sit down with certain landowners, like Mr. Oliver, who spoke earlier. He expressed concerns about the project impacting Sleepy Hollow Road. We had that as an entrance point. Hearing his concerns, we removed that as an entrance point. There's been some talk about, you know, our affiliation with Third Liberty Baptist Church. You'll see in front of you that you have a petition with over 170 signatures in support of this project. I would also note that those signatures, I'm pretty sure almost exclusively come from the district we're in. So I had heard that maybe there was another petition, you know, in opposition, and that's fine, everyone should have their voice, but I would ask, where do those people live? And do you have, you know, 173 in support? What we did with Third Liberty Baptist Church as part of our door-knocking campaign is we reached out to them, and they said, hey, we're having a luncheon, and they said, come talk. We went and spoke and told them about the project, and in turn, we made a $5,000 donation to them, and asked nothing, excuse me, asked nothing in return. And then about two months thereafter, we circulated a petition, and I just kind of want to set the, the record straight, there's been no bribery, there's been no quid pro quo, there has been... I'm getting out in front of this because, you know, I know, the Planning Commission, I know, has passed a policy that misinformation is not allowed at a public hearing, so I want to give you the accurate information. That's exactly what happened. And I can tell you that I didn't collect a single one of those signatures. I didn't. Those people understood what I'm about to get to, or the community benefits of this project. We want to help the Liberty Road community, we want to help that district, and we would like to funnel money there and help those in most need, and they want that money. That's why they support this project. That's why they support this project. We had a follow-up meeting with them to tell them more about it, and tell them how more you could maybe work with your supervisors to get this money funneled directly into their community. We hope that if the project is approved, that Supervisor Davis, the supervisor for the district, will work on behalf of the Liberty Road folks and all the constituents in, in that district to get that money in that district. That's what it's there for. Then finally, we held a community meeting. We, we sent out mailers to every adjacent landowner. We sent it out to the planning commissioners, the supervisors, the county administrator, county planner, Third Liberty Baptist Church members, and others, anybody whose contact information we had. And we had, I'll tell you, not a lot of people showed up. I wish more had, we probably could have addressed more concerns earlier on, but we, we did try to get out there on multiple occasions and meet folks that, that were in the community. Next slide, please. Speaking of the money that, that we would like to see funneled into this district, we have negotiated a siting agreement with the county, which I believe is on the agenda tonight. This siting agreement mirrors what the county did with Blue Rock and RWE on a pro rata basis. So that is basically, we sized it according, they had a 100-megawatt project, we have an 80-megawatt project. So, but, and, and we're trying to get the payments in early, because we know the county doesn't want to wait, you know, 40 years just for, for the tax revenue. That's the idea of the siting agreement. Get the money in, put it towards capital improvement plans, put it towards outline items in the capital budget, and this is exactly the mechanism that can be used to help those people that signed the petition in support of this project. This is $2.4 million. It'll come in a matter of years, that it could be funneled to the neediest people in our district. And so it'll be $800,000, six months after issuing, issuance of a special use permit, $800,000 at issuance of the building permit, and then finally, $800,000 upon commercial operation. This is again, this, I'm going to get to this, but this is over and above the 8.4, or 8.5 million dollars that the county will receive in tax revenue from this project. Also, there were questions about insurance and, you know, fires or incidents that occur. We are required, under the siting agreement, to also meet the exact same terms that RWE and the Blue Rock was, and its general liability insurance, which would not only cover anything that happens on the land, but also adjoining properties. We have addressed the petition a few times, and I do want to note, it's, you know, the county has a cap. You all met, and you determined that, you know, you only wanted so many solar projects. And as I said at the outset, that's your decision, and you made that decision. This project, if approved, would be under that cap. And I should note that transmission lines alone, let's just say for some reason Richmond does get their way, which again, we do not support, and they override something like that, transmission lines only have so much capacity. That alone is a mitigating, limiting factor. So you can only put so much solar in certain places. There is no scenario in which solar goes all over Buckingham County, but you already have a cap in place, so of course it can't right now. This project will be one of the last projects in Buckingham County if approved. Next slide, please. I touched on this earlier, but these are just some, just so you, I just kind of wanted to make sure the board knew what we've already been through during the Planning Commission process. We basically are just correcting or adding some language in the term of the expiration of the permit. That's just to make sure, it's a big project, so that we can get it built, and the interconnection study can all be completed in time. I believe this mirrors, again, the RWE and Blue Rock language. And then we spoke to the, the 350 feet, so it went from 300 to 350. I don't have on here the 50 to 75, which also, so we've gone over and above what the ordinance requires. And then again, as I noted, we removed the Sleepy Hollow Road access at the request of some of the citizens on, on that road. Next slide, please. And that just shows right there some of the areas and panels removed all around the Sleepy Hollow. We don't, we didn't just remove it as an entrance, we also pulled back more panels to protect that area. Next slide. That's, that's just showing that the, the Sleepy Hollow Road entrance is not an entrance, not even an emergency entrance anymore. Next slide, please. So this is important, this is what I've been talking about. You know, this is, this is a busy slide, but the big takeaway here is $10.9 million. You know, let's just, let's just round up maybe, call it 11, and that is 8.5 from taxes over 40 years relative to, if you did nothing and kept this as a timber track, you would get $234,000 over 40 years. I'll bet a school bus doesn't last 40 years. So you might be able to buy two school buses over 40 years, whereas what you could do with 8.5 million dollars if you approve this. In addition, like I said, there's another $2.4 million that'll be coming in in short order, not every year trickling in, but in short order between now and the time this thing is built. And that again, is we really hope that money goes to the district and the community where people are impacted and people have supported the project. Next slide, please. The key takeaways, I'm just going to keep repeating myself, but $10.9 million in direct revenue to Buckingham. We will be under the cap that you all have imposed. We also, you know, can state that we are not coming on, coming into Buckingham with follow-on projects, because there's no capacity on the transmission line. You should take comfort in both those things, a cap and, and the restriction on capacity. We have support from the community. I know there's going to be folks here tonight that'll speak in opposition, but I hope that you will remember to look down at the petition signatures in front of you. You know, it's, it's easy to speak against something, it is not very easy to get up in your community when you know you're going to face opposition and speak for something. So, you know, there's frankly some people that stayed home tonight because they were a little fearful of, of showing up of, of what, of what would happen. So... So we have engaged in extensive community engagement, as stated, we have gone above and beyond what the ordinance requires. And I, on the ordinance, you know, I think there's probably going to be a discussion tonight, there was a solar policy voted on by the Board of Supervisors. We were going through the planning commission process at that time, and the board took a vote, and they said that any applications that have already been submitted are not subject to the solar policy. So the board could have easily said, no, you guys, sorry, but you have to adhere to all these things. Well, in their wisdom, they didn't, because they understand a business-friendly county versus a non-business-friendly county. You don't go start building a building, and then the county all of a sudden changes all the requirements midway through. That would have been the equivalent. So we appreciate the decision, the understanding of, you know, welcoming business into the county, welcoming ten point nine million dollars into the county. So thank you for that. And then finally, of the land we have, you know, we're only going to use fifty-four percent of it, so I know it feels like a very big project, but really, if you look at the land we have under our option relative to what's actually going to be under panel and actually what's impacting the ground, it's very little, and it allows for significant vegetative buffering, native grasses, wildlife corridors, and really is in harmony with the area. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you have. Thank you.
Any board member have any questions?
I got one.
Go ahead.
Chairman Chambers. The biggest thing that I have a problem with Mr. West is that I'm the supervisor in that district, and I don't live three hundred yards from the project, and you didn't reach out to me personally.
Well, just again, to correct the record, I called you, Frank Hopkins called you twice, Kim Juwana called you. We asked Nikki how to get in touch with you, we emailed you, I can provide evidence of those emails, and we were told that, with all due respect Supervisor Davis, that you don't respond to applicants. So I did reach out to you, Frank reached out to you. If we can, I think I even called you on my cell phone, so I could probably show evidence of the phone calls themselves.
Well, I didn't see it, so he is, but...
We can ask county staff if in fact we asked that question.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir.
I like to, two little things, I'd like to talk to him, but if you don't mind. I got a video from over Louisa County where they had a solar panel, and what they showed in the panel, in the video was water coming down, it's red water, so it means grass won't ever planted in the areas where they done the solar. That was one, and two, the water was coming in areas where not normally the water comes from, so I guess when they were pushing the land and landing it out, they won't throw a pipe up on it to get the water out of that area. And to me, I know that's two things, that and planting the grass before you put these panels up would be a big deal. I know y'all got erosion and sediment control plans, but I didn't see exactly the deep thing on grass coming up, and I think it needs to be put in there, grass and...
I mean, if you, maybe if you'd like a condition that requires some seeding prior to, I just want to get you the detail you want, because we haven't, we don't usually start the stormwater management plan until a little further down the road, we need to finish our geotechnical analysis, our ALTA survey, and our survey that's on the ground for the cultural resources and historic resources that I mentioned, because we don't want to go impact anything we shouldn't impact. So until we finish that, which are quite expensive items, that's when you usually put together your stormwater management plan. We don't want to be moving dirt that we're not supposed to move, but certainly open to any suggestions you have on that.
No, it says twenty-five percent is all you're supposed to do at a time, but you know, go ahead and do plant the grass on that before you set them panels on top of it, because that'll help you. That's one thing, the other thing, we had talked about it, I know in the planning commission here too, you know, the three on fifty feet to seventy-five feet to fifty feet, right now, it's written as keep it out away from the solar equipment. Well, I think we talked about it before, and it's not in writing, it ought to be kept away from the fence, that'd be another twenty, maybe thirty feet away from it, but to me, you know, if somebody wanted to measure it, they can measure to the fence, they ain't going to be able to get inside and measure from the solar equipment.
Are you saying just seventy-five feet from the property line to the fence? Is that what you're, and then...
Yeah, from, just to the fence, not the solar equipment that you're talking about.
Okay.
Just change that word, and I know we talked about that before, but I don't see it in writing.
Yeah, we were talking about, we were trying to just do what, we discussed that beforehand, we just left it as Blue Rock, the way they did it, but...
Yeah, and that was what, I think that's what to change, they did change it to fence instead of solar equipment.
It was just to the solar equipment for Blue Rock Solar.
I know one of the, I had it, they said fence, I'm just all I'm saying.
I know there was some discussion at that planning commission meeting, just make sure that we are able to capture what your request is Supervisor Allen.
If anybody wants to change it, go right ahead, I'm just letting you know what's what my thoughts are.
Thank you, and, you know, on the stormwater, again, if you want to propose a condition, we're all ears, you know, we, I want there to be the best practices around stormwater management, it's been, like I said at the outset, I want, I want folks to understand that you can take comfort in what DEQ's done now because of exactly what you're talking about, what happened to Louisa and some other localities. It's not happening anymore because DEQ is really kind of taking a hard look at it, and they're not letting folks mismanage that work anymore.
Thank you.
I have, I have a couple of things that I'd like to see added to the SUP concerning setbacks from existing dwellings. Right now, it's at three hundred and fifty feet, and I'd like to see that setback adjusted to five hundred feet. I have two more, and I'll go ahead and state them all. I'd like to see the setback to perennial streams and connected wetlands, right now it's at fifty feet, I'd like to see that at a hundred feet. I think it's important to protect the streams and wetlands, and the last, the last thing I'd like to see is contaminant testing on the stormwater runoff ponds, as well as testing in Bear Garden Creek. And I'd like to see that done every two years throughout the life of the project, and the results of those tests be turned over to the county for examination, that way, well, I feel like the holding ponds from the runoff would be an indicator that something's going on, and you would catch it in time before it ever made it to any of the creeks or waterways.
I think it's a great idea. So let's take the waterway test, or contamination testing first, that's all right. I actually have never heard that on a solar project, and I think it's a great idea, so yes, hundred percent.
You've never heard of contaminant?
No, 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 I mean, never heard of a condition asking for that, I think it's a good idea, I'm agreeing with you, I'm saying...
Yes, sir, I think it's important, because I mean, if you have panels that are leaking or what have you, I think that's a way to mitigate the problem before it gets and turns into a big problem.
Absolutely, and we're very comfortable with our technology and solar as being benign and innocuous, that, you know, we're a hundred percent comfortable with that condition. So yes, in regard to the setbacks, just as a remind, I'm not saying no, I just want to remind everybody that, you know, the ordinance that we are subject to is fifty feet from any streams or wetlands, and it is three hundred feet from any existing residential dwellings, so...
I understand that, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I mean, you're sitting here telling us you want to be a good neighbor, you want to do the right thing, so I'm asking, I'm asking if you would, if you would make it five hundred feet, especially on the dwellings, because that way it's not right on top of somebody's house.
Right.
And that's basically what I'm asking for.
So we did an analysis, because when the solar policy was being drafted, we weren't sure what was going to happen, and it calls for five hundred feet, and frankly, we got pretty worried when we saw the results of it, because it was what I was speaking to before, it's like kind of, you're building a building, and then all of a sudden they changed the requirements. We saw that it was going to have probably something like a five, six, or seven megawatt impact, which maybe doesn't sound like a lot, but that's many, that's a lot of money on the project. What we, what we feel like the project can bear, and it will incur costs, is a four hundred foot setback, so that would mean, you know, the ordinance we're subject to calls for three hundred, you're asking for five hundred, we're at three fifty, we meet you in the middle at four hundred, that way, we can stand by the money that we want to generate. You know, if we continue to impair the project, we can't hold the tax money and the siting agreement money and that revenue that we've agreed to, because we're reducing size and thus it's less valuable, and we can't pay the money. But at four hundred feet, we think it works. Same thing on the streams and connected waterways, we can go to seventy-five feet, exact same reason, because it's not just the streams. The way it's written is it applies to wetlands and streams, and these can be both Army Corps of Engineers jurisdictional wetlands, or it can be state DEQ jurisdictional wetlands, the setback applies to both, and when you look at anywhere in Virginia frankly, on a large tract of land, you're going to see that. So the implications going to fifty to a hundred, it's probably more dire on the revenue than the three hundred to five hundred, but both would impact the revenue significantly, and then puts you in the question, can we stand by the siting agreement and the tax revenue? So if you're willing to meet us in the middle, that's what we're hoping for, I mean, I'm saying yes, in a way, to all three, but with just a little variation, meet me in the middle on the setbacks, and a hundred percent yes on the contamination testing.
So is, could you go over this again, Mike?
Yeah.
Could you ask, when we get to the two figures straight, Mike, what did you ask for on the setback?
I asked for five hundred feet.
We're saying we can go, we're at three fifty...
And it had originally been what?
Three hundred, the ordinance requires three hundred, we can go to four hundred, he's asking for five hundred.
They've already upped it to three fifty.
Yeah, we've already come...
And how much off the water?
Four hundred.
Well, and then the wetlands, it's at fifty, we can come to seventy-five, he's asking for a hundred. And then we are a hundred percent, and I assume the contamination testing is going to be, obviously, the costs will be incurred by us, which is fine.
That's correct.
Yeah, I just want to make, I think when we propose the condition, let's make that clear, that the project owner incurs that cost, that's what we would expect. But I just want to make it clear, you know, all these items come with a cost, and thus impact the revenue, not just to us, but also to the county.
I understand that. What we're basically concerned about is trying to protect the residents as much as possible, and trying to give them as much buffer as it could be possibly done. So it was originally in agreement, three hundred, you went to three fifty, and you're saying that you can do four hundred feet.
Yes, and we did the analysis, and I would love to say yes to five hundred, it, we can't stand by the numbers that we've proposed, and if we do that, the impact to the project is too great, and keep in mind, you know, we've got a lot of sunk costs in this project already, you know, because we were operating under the ordinance that the county presented to us.
Well, I read through the, I read through the special use permit, and I didn't see anything in there about water testing, and I really feel, I really feel like that needs to be done.
And you agree into the water testing?
Hundred percent agree.
If that is, I mean, if that is not to bear a financial burden on you or anybody else, that's to protect the people sitting in the audience right here that own adjoining properties.
Right. We want to protect the health and safety as much as anyone else, and we agree with
Anybody more questions? How many, how many signed up for puppy here?
Fifteen.
Can we take a five minute break?
We'll take a five minute break, then we'll come back open the puppy here and... Who was the first one, Ms. Allen?
Ms. Marshall.
Ms. Marshall?
Oh, this is who was lost his cell phone back there. I don't. Ms. Whitwer found it back there at the back.
Oh, who?
Oh, it was in the ladies restroom?
Yeah.
Oh, ladies restroom.
Well, no, it ain't none of y'all.
All right. I hope everything's in the lady.
Hey, Nikki.
Stephanie Marshall.
She's here.
Okay, and Ruth Aldridge is next.
Uh, good evening, honorable supervisors. My name is Stephanie Marshall. My husband Shane and I own Brickyard Bulls. We are a cattle ranch that raises full-blood Wagyu and Black Angus cattle. One of our bulls was the second highest bid in the recent Virginia BCIA 2023 annual sale. That bull was born and raised in Buckingham County. I am here to speak in opposition to the proposed development of the Arvonia Solar Facility. We know what facilities like Arvonia Solar do to rural communities. They pollute waterways, destroy the natural habitat, bring in traffic, and place financial liability on the taxpayers. Our children and grandchildren will be responsible for the cleanup if you allow this project to be built. Farmland that is converted to a solar power site loses farm employees and the farm-related occupations who perform contract services to the site. Most of these jobs are held by local residents who provide farm supplies, maintenance of farm machinery, crop insurance, crop production, irrigation, harvesting and sale of crops, insect control, and veterinary services, just to name a few. None of these services are required by a solar facility. We have heard the arguments from the developer. They claim that this development will create jobs and economic growth. Most of the jobs will be low-paying temporary construction jobs, and most of the workers will be from out-of-state, and the electricity produced will not be used by the residents of Buckingham County. It will be sold by a solar company and delivered elsewhere. The developer is not from Virginia. They were formed by Hodson Group of India. The office in New York City is virtual office space meant to detract from their true intentions. They're in it for the money and the short term. If you remember in the November PC meeting, Mr. West and Mr. Hopkins spoke about de-risking the project for their company, getting the board to quickly approve the permit, and selling the project ASAP. In the end, Buckingham County will be responsible for this. The cost of county services will have to go up. Our fire departments are not equipped to handle hazardous chemical solar facility fires. Revenue from tourism will be affected because who wants to visit a once-beautiful countryside replete with row after row of solar panels? When a commercial solar project is approved in a rural farming community, the impact on the county and its residents is far-reaching with lasting consequences. Do you want this to be your legacy? We have enough solar facilities in Buckingham County. Please, I ask you, reject Arvonia Solar. Thank you.
Ruth Aldridge, District Six, and Cindy Marchetti will be next.
Good evening. I'm Ruth Olenger Aldridge from District Six, and I'm here to speak about the proposal for Arvonia Solar case. I have been in Buckingham County, Virginia for over 25 years. As well, I've been working at the University of Virginia in healthcare, education, research, administration fields for over 25 years in the areas of medicine, international health, inpatient outpatient care, working along many medical team providers, both domestically and internationally. Clean water is a necessity, but vital, for survival for people, animals, and our environment. This, to me, is nothing but murky water, murky water that could have major side effects. I'm going to get right to the point. Please, again, pause from voting for Arvonia Solar and continue to educate yourself more on the issues that are for all of humanity, not just in Buckingham. We already have enough solar farms coming, and we need to learn from the lessons that will be presented as time moves along for the practices and protocols for those solar farms. Please do not make Buckingham County, Virginia, a historical marker like contamination of Flint, Michigan, water crisis in 2014. It exposed over 100,000 residents to elevated lead levels, as well resulted in a diagnosis of Legionnaires' disease, approximately 80 lawsuits, 15 indicted, and one found guilty, 6 to 12, approximately, 10, 6 to 12,000 children exposed to lead by drinking water. When in these solar plants are human and health services involved? The fire, the EMT, rescue, emergency response for potential disaster management? Where will this be for the protocols for this county? More specifically, please read July 6, 2023, report from Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. Citizens surveyed, approximately 85% believe that solar should be built on rooftops, parking lots, landfills, rather than that of cleared forest and farmland. This project is less than 100 feet, I mean, less than a mile from the James River, which is part of the Chesapeake watershed. To me, the current society pitch of green is, in fact, not green when you take away existing forest. It is the window dressing for businesses, media, and other entities that gain from investments. As I've said in the past and expressed before, I'm extremely concerned for Buckingham County, Virginia, and the far-reaching solar farm industries for our citizens. From what I understand, this is not just economics of local and domestic areas, but this is potentially has international impact from an entity, one that can potentially bankrupt future generations that live in any area of businesses that practice LLCs, that can, cannot sustain when issues arise. They can wipe themselves clean and move onward without any responsibility. If Hobson is the so-called hook for all the issues, why is there an Arvonia LLC? Can the Arvonia LLC be dissolved because issues that will occur in time?
Three minutes up, Ms. Aldridge. Thank you.
Cindy Marchetti, District One, and Ted Philippin will be next.
Good evening, Cindy Marchetti, District One. I'm speaking from the heart mostly, and I say no. No, thank you. Many have spoken out for years trying to convince county officials and gold mining, about gold mining, solar fields, and selling, and releasing large parcels of land, especially to foreign investors, is not good for our county. We want to protect our county, our health and our welfare, which requires protecting the land and wildlife of the area. We are supposed to act as good stewards of God's creation. Instead, we have received a huge designation of 7,500 acres to be used for more solar panels. Our dollars and tax dollars are essentially being dumped into what many consider an inadequate and unreliable method of power generation. The solar industry has its own substantial carbon footprint through installation, deconstruction, and disposal of panels, not to mention the possibility of lithium, which I know y'all are not doing batteries. Many who are awakened see this climate change, global warming agenda for what it is, a route to waste money and gain control. So, how will the project benefit the majority of residents here? I realize a few get a payout for years for leasing their land, and it's easy money for the county, but to the detriment of residents and wildlife in the area. Will citizens receive electricity generated by this project? No. Will anyone benefit from reduced public power bills? No. Will any, will many of our county citizens be employed in the development of this monstrosity? No. What we will get, or we will lose, the potential grazing and farmland. We will get the potential for the James River and its tributaries to become polluted. We will get electromagnetic radiation, which has the potential to harm the health of citizens and wildlife who reside near the solar fields. We will get degradation of wildlife habitat and property values. We will get the potential for birds to be torched from excessive heat produced by these panels. I worry that the sign on Route 15 that reads "Arvonia, Bird Sanctuary" will have to be removed. Please do the right thing and vote no to protect our future. Thank you for your time.
Ted Philippin, District One, and Laura Fitzgerald will be next.
Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, I'm going to cut to the chase. Back in the day when Continental Can first purchased this piece of property, it was known, it was a parcel known as the White Track. It was about 400 acres where people lived for generations, both white and black. Some were there by choice, some were there had no choice. As a young man, my dad went over and checked on the project, just to see what was going on. He noticed something wasn't right over there, and he asked, he said, "Where are all the tombstones? What happened to the tombstones?" Well, a long story short, what they did was shove the tombstones away, shoved them in the old hand-dug well, out of sight, out of mind. This is timber company land, son. Mind your own business, is what he was told. So, there's a large cemetery that's on this site. It's been desecrated, but it's there. I know it's there, now you know it, and it's on your shoulders at this point, on your We're called by a higher power to be good stewards of whatever falls within our reach. To clear-cut 500 acres, or 600, or whatever it takes, shove the high spots into the low spots, and put up a fence to keep animals out, not in, we can do better than that. Get the dollar signs out of your eyes for right now, let's, let's talk about this. I heard the word "truth." You know what truth is? The only thing in the world that you cannot change, can't change it. I stand by what I said about Third Liberty. There's finer folks as they are, and y'all were here when I said it, finer folks as they are, none of them have a horse in this race. None of them own a piece of property. I do. No one called me. Did you, Mr. West? No one called me. No, you didn't. That's something that's only, this thing that they go build is only 20% effective on its best day. We can do better than that in this county. If that's what we have right there, I want you all to vote as if this were in your backyard. If this was in your backyard, how would you vote? If these were your ancestors, how would you vote? Think about that. Get the dollar signs out of your eyes right now, because what's going on here right now is more than money, more than money. Thank you.
Laura Fitzgerald, District Two, and Jordan Miles will be next.
So I'm just going to follow up on everything that these fine folks have already said. This is a travesty to come to Buckingham County. We have been given a piece of land that is nothing but God's country, and to have somebody coming in throwing dollar signs, that's all I heard out of this man, was talking about money, money, money. If y'all gonna sell your souls for money, then you should all be ashamed of yourselves. This is absolutely ridiculous. Whoever approved that mess out there on 60, it's dead out there. I don't know if y'all ride by, but there ain't no birds flying around. It's dead, and they will kill this part of the area, too. So I really, really hope that you guys find it in your souls to know right from wrong and know that this is wrong, and we should not, and absolutely should not, be sold out to a dollar sign. This is not Buckingham. Y'all talk about these dogs running, they gonna strip away all of that. Whoever gives you money, they will own you, and they will own you and tell you what to do at the end of the day, so please, y'all, don't let this pass. Thank you very much.
Jordan Miles, District Four, and Doug Oliver will be next.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, Mr. Carter. Uh, my name is Jordan Miles, and I live at 13170 West James Anderson Highway, just a few houses down here to the west. It's nice to see you all, notably my supervisor, Supervisor Garrett, who succeeded me on the board, and I want to thank him and all of y'all for your service, because I've been there, and it's not easy. It is not easy, and you cannot make everybody happy. There is no earthly way you can do that. If you try, you gonna fail. I'll just say that. With regards to the solar legislation that I think a gentleman or two spoke about, that's a pretty serious issue in Richmond. A few Democrats from Fairfax County are into that. I'm a Democrat, I don't think it's a good idea. I think local control is very, very important when it comes to anything. This, what happened was with BioSalads in the 90s, this is exactly what happened. They took local control from BioSalads. But I'm afraid I'm not going to get any claps, which is okay, but I am speaking in favor of the proposed industrial-scale solar facility that's being proposed tonight, that you all have reviewed in detail. And again, having served with many of you on the board and have voted in favor of the robust solar policy that this project is going off of, there are numerous protections to many of the special use permits that, that we voted on in the past, and this one addresses land, air, water, and also landowners, in my opinion, and I think it's a positive project that I encourage you to approve. I'll, I'll be frank, I live down here, I don't live in that area. And, and I'm just being upfront with you about it. Also, in this project, Mr. Chairman, which is protected by those strong conditions and those rules reference, it would be good and safe for its neighbors, in my opinion, from reviewing the permit. If you've not read that policy, I would encourage you to do so. I'm personally glad that the US is continuing to become less reliant on fossil fuels. I think it's a good thing, in my opinion, and I think it's good for not only the county, but the state, but the United States. I think going green is good, I think it's clean, and it's good for the environment, but it's also good for business, if you think about it, I think. Again, as the lady said earlier, you know, solar facilities don't send children to school, they don't call the police, they don't crumble the roads, they don't call the rescue squads, they don't require solid waste vehicles to go up and down the road. And I've said many times, and the lady just mentioned this, that Route 60 solar facility does not represent good solar projects in the county. Being a former supervisor, I know, you know, that people don't want to mention the dollar signs. Well, we've been saying for years that we're kicking the can down the road for a tax increase. I think the board needs to become less reliant on personal property and on real estate taxes and have a more diverse revenue stream. Again, with the lack of industry coming to the county, solar facilities following in line with your policies should be highly regarded as opportunities for revenue if these facilities are in appropriate location. And I'm not gonna pretend to be an expert, I'm not an engineer, but just because someone says something does not mean it's true. Thank you.
Doug Oliver, District Six, and Donald Doyer will be next.
Doug Oliver, District Six. I think it goes without saying that I'm here tonight in opposition to this Arvonia solar project. I'd like to remind you of the previous meeting, when I questioned the validity of the planning commission meetings regarding this project and the county's attorneys' responses to those questions. Here's what is quoted, right on y'all's website, you can look it up. I believe that was complied with. I'm doing it off the top of my head, so it's subject. I think you are. I'm sure the applicant will be doing more, extra research, and the county will be doing a little extra research. And the final thing is that I may have to come back and tell you that my quick reaction was not necessarily the best one, in which case you would not hold a public meeting. Well, I hope the county's done its due diligence, because you're relying on the applicants and their opinion from an expert, when all you gotta do is call the Attorney General's office, say, "This is what happened, is this within the code?" Has that happened? I don't know. I guess y'all know. So, but after those comments in that meeting, two days later, the zoning signs were put up at all entrances. Amazing, Suzanne! And our current property, adjacent property owner's letter now has the largest landowner, BTG Pachul, listed in it. Wow! Can you believe it? But the all the other ones didn't have it. The public notices didn't have it. But now, all of a sudden, somebody speaks up, and there it is. So, I was told from the beginning of this process by all of your constituents, "Doug, you wasting your time. They gonna do what they wanna do anyway. All they see is dollar signs. All they see is the money it's gonna bring in, and they gonna do what they wanna do regardless." So, we're talking about truth. They said that they agreed to a 75-foot setback. Anybody in here can go on the planning commission's website. Supervisor Allen brought it up, and it was voted on for them to stay 75 feet from the fence to the property line. Public record, go on YouTube, look at it. They said that they abandoned Sleepy Hollow Road. They abandoned it as a construction entrance, however, they wanted it as an emergency entrance. Supervisor Allen, again, brought up the motion, and it was voted that they couldn't use Sleepy Hollow Road at all. So, let's get the truth out, because it'll set you free. Let's get it out! If they're telling the truth, all right, the other truth, they met with Johnny. What'd he say? September 22nd. I've been questioning the timber company. They signed a non-disclosure agreement with BTG Pachul that just couldn't be talked about. They had a public meeting, October 11th, 2023. Two landowners showed up, me and Alan Hudson. So, I'm gonna leave you with this. The project's going into an area of national significance, the birthplace of Carter G. Woodson, not his gravesite, as you said. This community already has a Bear Garden, which I believe is the largest taxpayer in Buckingham County. Are you gonna be a public servant on this vote, or you gonna be a political leader? Thank you.
Donald Doyer, District Six, and Marie Flowers will be next.
Good evening, members of the board. Donald Doyer, Scottsdale, Virginia, District Six. That's kind of a hard thing to follow up on, but some things have changed since I wrote what I wrote here, and I'll read this, but some things since then have changed in just a few minutes, but we'll go from there. I'm asked the board supervisors to deny the Arvonia solar request. I've spoken here before about the uncertainties that can arise from these huge projects, over 1,000 acres tied up with thousands of solar panels, 35 to 40 years. Potential problems like erosion, fire, water, soil contamination, and the list can go on. We now have a solar policy that gives us much better protection, but this SUP does not fall under that. I think if additional conditions are not in place on this request, it would be irresponsible of the board to even consider the passage. We have erosion that can escape into the James River because we have no grading grad lines. We have water and soil contamination that needs to be monitored every, at least every two years, which risk bought up by Mr. Palmer. We also need our setbacks moved to 100 feet. We're the ones who decide that. I would think we're the ones who decide that. This is an SUP who comes up, and I don't know why we're trying to appease them. We have low built-in environmental insurance to be done. They now have updated theirs, or where they go, say they're gonna do that now. We go back to Route 60. Route 60's solar project was a disaster, as many board members said. Some conditions were put on Riverstone to try to make future ones better, but we found out they also lack many ways that can harm the county and its residents. Again, finally, a solar policy was adopted, but we cannot use it here. But you can add other restrictions to it. In my opinion, that this solar request is very bad for the county and its citizens. Each one of you has your own opinion also. The only difference is, your opinion is yours, but your vote should be the voice of those who you represent. There is a petition presented with many names and many different districts. I've also talked to many residents, and all but one said they did not want this in the county. The one that said he did said, "I really don't care, as long as it ain't close to me." We all live in this together. Just because it's not close to you doesn't mean we don't care about others, having to worry about health issues it could affect on them. I can remember when Riverstone came up for a vote. The supervisor in my district said he had to vote against it because the majority of the people in his district were against it. This is your job. You are the voice for those who you represent. Thank you.
Marie Flowers, District Three, and Diane Whitworth will be next.
Hi, my name is Marie Flowers. I'm, I live in District Three. I came to this meeting because I went to the planning commission meeting, and one of the members had asked the representative from this company if they would adopt the new, the new policy, some of the issues in the new policy, and the representative says, "No, we can't do that." But it seems to me that perhaps they have become more flexible and will cooperate. And, let's see, one of the things that I feel that, I don't think any of these solar facilities here in Buckingham gives us any of that electricity. They sell it to somebody else. Another thing is, if the project were smaller, would that make a difference? I know the bigger the project is, the more money the company's gonna make, but I am for renewable power, and I don't know what the right answer is, but I also am for the environment, to have a good environment. Okay. I've lost my, my train of thought, but I just, I know it's a difficult decision to make, and we are hoping to get some tax money off this, but there must be a way that it can be changed so that it doesn't offend so many people or affect so many people. My thought would be, if it were smaller. Anyway, that's what I think. Thank you.
Diane Whitworth, and Laura Lonyeski will be next.
Good afternoon. My name is Diane Whitworth, and I'm from District One. So, first, I want to thank you for the chairman and the board for listening to us and to hear our voices, which I think are the constituents, and as they've talked about before. But I just want to say that I've been a nurse for over 30 years, and if we talk about checklists, and they checked off their checklist, well, y'all know in healthcare, we have lots of checklists. We checklist everything, from the time you walk in our door to the time you leave. We have a checklist for your age, your race, your color, your fall risk, your suicide risk. We have a list for your medications. We have a medication reconciliation list. We have a list capturing whether you have diabetes, kidney disease, high blood pressure, and cardiac problems. The information on this checklist is wonderful, it's valuable, and it's loaded into your medical record to help keep patients safe. How many patient, people in this room do you think have that same medical record? And it's not the list that keeps you safe. What keeps you safe in a hospital is that we capture upfront with the identities that you have, that we capture upfront, which they are not capturing on these lists. Nurses know this. We read between the lines, we see a more complete picture. We ask deeper questions, we observe not only what is obvious, but what is not obvious. We ask questions about what is really going on, and that way, we connect the dots, and we take that knowledge of each individual patients, of each one of y'all, and don't rope you together as a checklist, but look at you individually and say, "What is the best for you? What is the best for this district? What is the best for our county?" That's what we look at in healthcare. So, how do we keep patients safe? Let's talk about an example. The patient has been discharged, and they have a way to go to dialysis, and the care, case management did the checklist. We checked it all. Patient has a way to go to dialysis, all looks good, except the nurse finds out that the patient's husband has fell. He cannot carry her to the dialysis. Dialysis is critical, they have to have it. So, now, we don't have a way to get that patient to dialysis, so we stop the line. We say, "No, we don't have enough information, we don't have enough valid resources to do this. We need to stop the line right there." So, let's equate the checklist to what we've heard about with the solar panels, okay? Because that makes it, make a little bit more sense, okay? Industrial solar practices, if all they needed was a checklist for industrial solar energy in our county, then why not give it to the state? They can have a checklist, they can do a checklist that we come up with. So, they said, okay? But you, as individual representatives, you know it's not the checklist, it's the individuals, it's the counties that we need to go by. So, they checked the boxes, said the land was relatively flat. Not my opinion, their opinion, okay? The residents here have provided a different story. They showed you pictures where the land is not flat, okay? So, stating that the land is flat does not make it a fact, okay? Arvonia solar panel checklist states no concern for runoff, but Bear Garden Creek tells a different story, okay? Thank you so much.
Laura Lonyeski and Harry Bryant III will be next.
Good evening. My name is Laura Whitworth Lonyeski, and I'm representing District One. And first, I would like to bring up that I have a petition here opposing Arvonia Solar. There are 528 signatures, and most of them are from District One, but they also represent the entire county and all of these great people that are here, and even ones that couldn't be with us tonight. It was a team effort. The county is telling you, "We really don't want these things at all." I'd also want to bring up something about Union Hill. Judge Stephanie Thatcher wrote in the opinion of that case that environmental justice is not merely a box to be checked, as my mom was trying to talk about, that it, that this was about historic Union Hill. The court ruled that the state had not adequately considered the impact and health risk to the historic community. The location of this proposed site, if you look at the developer's map, you can see Bear Garden Power Station in the top. It's right across, the north end of this project is right across from Bear Garden Power Station. Our district already has to deal with, with that, and the EPA deems that an area that is an affected area. They study that population a lot, and I don't feel that we need to have another power plant here. I have given you all what I think is maybe a better option. The gentleman that's here listed right on top is Josephus Almond. He is with the Southern Environmental Law Center, and he has been working with counties out west. And the highlighted thing that I talked about was, this is in Wise County, and just one year after solar panel installation on top of their schools, the school system saved nearly $8 million in energy cost that will be reinvested into the school system, and it is one of several schools that are doing this. So, we keep talking about money. I think there is a much better way to be doing solar. I don't think that we have to clear-cut and destroy our forest and farmlands to do that. I went, I think I've got a couple more minutes. I went down to the area that we were talking about, the historic area, and I tried to talk to some of those people that were down there, right across from Bear Garden Station, to let them know, "Do you realize what's coming in the backyard? You know, we already deal with Bear Garden Power Station." And I went to many houses, and I talked with them, and they had no idea that this is being proposed. So, I don't think that a lot of people know, and then, once they find out about it, they're, they're very opposed to it. "We don't want this," as everyone was saying. So, please do not vote for this, and thank you for your time.
Harry Bryant III, and then David Ball will be next.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Chairman, supervisors.
Thank you.
Most of you guys know I've been a long-term resident of Buckingham County, a former business owner of Buckingham County, and a long-term taxpayer in Buckingham County. And unlike you, Jordan, this project is at my back door, and I am opposed to this project coming into my back door. I'm all for, I'm pro-business, I am pro-solar farm. I think solar farms are great, but not in 1,000-acre lots. It should be smaller. Mr. Davis back there has a solar farm that was approved last year, 50 acres. Guess what? Mr. Davis owns all the land around that 50 acres, so he isn't affecting anyone other than his own property. This solar farm is gonna take 1,000 acres, and it's gonna be, for now, from now on, nobody would be able to use that property, there will be no more forests there, it'll all be utilized in a solar farm that is, I know the money the taxpayers are gonna, I mean, the county's gonna get is very enticing, but how many of you guys would want it in your back door? Thank you.
David Ball, then Skylar's uncle will be next.
Good evening again, David Ball, and I'm in District Three, so I'm not directly impacted, but with regards to the solar issue, I was at, about a year or so ago, the CRC meeting, which is Commonwealth Regional Council, and out of that council, all of the districts, except for two, Buckingham and I forget what the other one was, did not have a solar policy at that time, but the other district or the other county, they were putting a moratorium. And every county had put a moratorium on solar until they had their policy in place. Buckingham County kept approving, and kept approving, and kept approving, but never put the policy in place till the end of last year. So, in, in fact, it didn't affect everything that it So in fact, it didn't affect everything that had come before. And I can tell you, if you go to Google Earth, you can see on Google Earth quite easily and quite quickly identify Buckingham County's Cumberland line by the solar field that's already in existence there. Now, I know solar is popular. But let's take into consideration, if this is a forty-year plan to have these solar panels out, they're not going to last forty years. So if they sell off the project and these panels go bad, somebody has to come out and replace them. Whoever buys it or inherits it, they're responsible. If you get a bond, you need to know that that bond is assured with some sort of cash or insurance policy that's going to pay if you're burdened with having to remove or clean up that site. Because if you don't, that bond could disappear and be totally worthless. Now, Fairfax County had somebody apply to put a solar field there. They were totally against it because they don't want it in their territory. Now, with regards to the fact that they said they're going to give you eight hundred thousand dollars, that seems like if you accept this policy, that's the money that you need for your area EMTs to have a day and night for that facility. At least you've got the money there if you do approve this project. So you can have at least that part of the county covered by emergency rescue, day and night. And it might even help you pay for some of those vehicles that you need. So that's my thoughts.
Skylar Zunk and Richard Walker will be next.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Skylar Zunk. I'm here on behalf of Energy Right, a nonprofit organization that my colleague and I founded a couple of years back to help encourage clean energy developed the right way all across Virginia using conservative principles. We're an education organization and that's taken us to sixty-plus counties across the Commonwealth helping to increase the level of understanding of clean energy projects and encouraging best practices so that solar projects can be the best neighbors possible. Last year, this education effort brought us to Buckingham County. It's been a privilege to work with many of you and your planning commissioners and other folks within the county. We were very thrilled to have a spot on the solar committee that helped with the policy draft that is now implemented here. I mentioned conservative ideals. I'm from rural Virginia. I'm the proud neighbor to a four-hundred-acre solar facility producing fifty, in construction, which will produce fifty-two megawatts of clean energy right next to my family's property. We believe property rights is important. Property rights is the keystone to capitalism. Using your property how you see fit is incredibly important. George Washington agreed. He said freedom and property rights are inseparable. You cannot have one without the other. When willing, landowners come to you asking for permission, they're asking for your blessing and they're hoping to utilize their property rights how they see fit. And of course, dollar signs do matter with the economic impact that is being driven directly towards Buckingham County in the way of tax revenue, which we hope you use to the benefit of your citizens. In Richmond, Governor Yonkin appointed me to be on the Virginia Solar Authority, which I now chair. There's a lot of interesting things going on in Richmond. Governor Yonkin knows that creating more energy in Virginia is the utmost priority to help power our homes and businesses. We need more energy to grow. Virginia imports a significant portion of our energy from other states. We need to produce, be producing our own energy at the county level, be producing our own energy at the state level. We can only, we can only ask that of our national leaders as well. Really appreciated Commissioner Kapinski's remarks on the legislation being considered in Richmond, taking away local control. Be the first to say I disagree with that. That is not the way to go. In fact, this process that Buckingham County has undertaken on this project and past projects is the proper way to go. Considering it locally, involving the input of your constituents, your planning commissioners, and of course yourselves, is how we create good quality projects. We think these decisions should be made locally, but these are tough decisions. I mentioned I'm the neighbor to a project and passed out to you all some poll results. Two weeks ago, we polled eight hundred Virginians in a representative sample. Eighty-three percent disagreed that local governments should be able to deny landowners their right to pursue a responsibly cited solar project. When asked, what would you do on a hundred acres near your home? Giving them five choices, a few of them other, a few other choices develop, or being energy development projects, fifty-five percent chose to solar farm. Of course, I mentioned the importance of being an energy independent state. Solar projects are safe. If they weren't, would we be advocating for them on the schools? If they weren't safe, would we be putting them on our roofs? Thank you and we look forward to being a resource to Buckingham County.
Richard Walker, that will be all.
Gentlemen, my name is Richard Walker. I'm the founder and executive director of nonprofit organization Bridging the Gap in Virginia. We train individuals on how to install solar panels. Individuals coming out of incarceration, individuals that are pretty much unemployed or underemployed. To help them, I'm a real dead set on a lot of these utility-level projects to be bringing folk from other states. So I diligently train individuals within the state of Virginia. And we go throughout the entire Commonwealth. Wherever there is a panel to be built, that's where they go. You know, and that's sustainable income, you know, where they're making a living wage, not a minimum wage. That they're able to enjoy the labor, you know, from what they do, from what they carry in to help bring, raise their families, you know. I was told not to bring this up, but I keep hearing folk coming up here and saying, in my backyard, in my backyard. Listen, I'm a homeowner, I'm a landowner here in Buckingham County. It's been passed through generation after generation since eighteen sixty-seven, when my great-great-grandfather purchased his land from his slave owner. When it came to Dominion Power wanting to build a pipeline and compressor station on our land, where were y'all? Where were y'all? At this point, at this juncture, that, and I heard someone say it, well, it's not in my backyard. At what point where it's going to be collectively understood to help support the environment, to help support, to stop another Dominion from coming in with fossil fuels, to help support employment, that they won't recruit individuals from Georgia or South Carolina? At what extent will we come together in this county to make a big difference in the lives of the folk that have been here for generations? I ask you, gentlemen, please consider this project, that more individuals be able to get gainful employment that live and reside in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Thank you.
That's all.
That's all the public here?
Yes.
So at this time, we close the public here? What was that? What is the pledge of the board?
Paul, I would like to ask Kim, since you made that motion earlier, do you want to make a motion there so we can add it to it?
Didn't make no motion.
No, I'm talking about where it's talking about the five hundred feet. Does you want to, and he agreed to the four hundred feet. Do you want to add that motion?
I want to add it to the motion.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have it on to our paperwork right now, so.
No, I want to add that on to the motion.
Supervisor, change, county administrator. With the three amendments that Mr. Palmer mentioned, number one was increasing the acreage. I believe, is that right, four hundred acres, I mean, four hundred feet? Is that correct? He agreed to four hundred feet?
I asked for five, they agreed to four.
Okay. Well, with the amendment of four hundred feet, there's seventy-five acres, I mean, seventy-five feet from the water, wetlands and the water testing. I moved that the water supervisors approve the special use permit for Mountain Pine Arvonia LLC and Mountain Pine Two LLC in case number twenty-two dash SUP three thirty-four to allow for the construction and operation of a solar photovoltaic utility scale solar facility that can produce up to eighty megawatts on approximately a thousand sixty-five acres in Buckingham County on the conditions set forth in the memo from the zoning administrator to the board dated February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four and found in the board package with those three conditions that Mr. Palmer mentioned. I make a motion.
Do you want to change it to the fence instead of the energy?
What, ma'am?
The measurement, instead of doing it to the solar energy equipment, do you want to just put it to the fence? I know it's what we talked about before. I just want to know if you want to add that to your motion.
The fence. What's the board's pleasure? Y'all want to talk about that? What do you think?
I would like to add it to the fence myself, because I know we've already talked about it before.
You talking about the setback added to the fence?
Yeah, because right now, they go all the way into the equipment. Now, I would just say the fence and that would, that would add a little bit to it and be easier for anybody else to measure. My thought.
If you add a little, a few more feet to it.
Okay, I have no problem adding that to it.
Do you agree with that? You agree? Okay. So that's in the motion.
All right, I made the motion.
You heard the motion. Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
The button? It been motion and second? All in favor? What's wrong with that thing? Four yes. Four yes. One abstain and one no, okay? Two no's. Mr. Emerson, wait five more minutes.
Public hearing for the siding agreement.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Ms. Emerson. I'm sorry, can we wait a minute? I'm sorry, go ahead.
You want to close that door back there? Lot of noise in that hall.
You can send a request for tomorrow. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the next item on the agenda this evening is the public hearing for the siding agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, just to make sure we're straight, before we move to that next public hearing, I want to make sure the amendments that y'all made and are adopted are understood so that we can get them in the records, be fair to the clerk here taking the other minutes. What I understand you did on item ten, you wanted to change three hundred and fifty feet to four hundred feet. Is that right? So that's item ten?
I think it's correct.
Item twelve, you're amending fifty feet to seventy-five feet?
Correct.
And then the, the testing, I've created some language here after the discussion started, that the applicant shell before construction began, test Bear Garden Creek in at least three places, one near the place where Bear Garden Creek enters the property, called the entrance point, one near the place where Bear Garden leaves the property, the exit point, and one approximately halfway between the entrance and the exit point for any level of contaminants that could potentially reach from the solar panels and be within six months of the date at which the project first begins producing electricity other than for testing purposes that is injected on, into the electric grid. You'll test Bear Garden Creek in at least those same three places and for any level of contaminants. And then during the life of the project, every two years from the date from which the project first begins, they'd make those same tests again and they would report the results to the county within two weeks of them receiving results. Is that language acceptable?
That's what you said, ma'am.
Mr. Wright, excuse me, there's one more change.
And the final one that would be.
Eleven A?
Eleven A. Would say applicant agreed to, would be from the fence to the property line. So you strike at the word solar equipment and say fence line.
You also have the fact that they would cover the cost of the test.
Well, it says the applicant shell, so that's on them to do that there. Just want to make sure of that, because we had to write this stuff down and I just want to make sure we're writing down what y'all want to accomplish. All right, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No problem. You may want to stay here.
Go ahead, Ms. Emerson.
And the next public hearing would be for the siding agreement. The siding agreement was included in the packet. The applicant is here this evening to discuss any questions you may have along with our county administrator Carl Carter and legal counsel, Mr. Wright.
Where's he at?
Which one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see him back behind you. I thought he left. Are there any questions for him?
We addressed it in the PowerPoint, but haven't answered the question. I just want to say thank you all. I know that was difficult, that there's a lot of people that are in quiet desperation off Liberty Road that are very happy and thankful and just hope that that money that is coming and the money from this agreement can be, can serve a purpose for those folks, so.
Thank you. Here are no questions. Did anybody sign up for the public here? Well, we're closed, we don't have to open, anybody signed up? What is the pledge of the board on the siding plan?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. County Administrator, I move that Buckingham County Board of Supervisors approve the siding agreement between Buckingham County and Mountain Pine Arvonia LLC and Mountain Pine Arvonia Two LLC. As presented tonight and authorized, the chairman of the Board of Supervisors and the county administrator to execute and deliver the document on the behalf of the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors.
Chairman, do you want to amend that to what the amendments in the document?
Actually, SUP is what you amended and the siding agreement incorporates that amended SUP into it.
Okay.
Get a second.
Oh, mama, you seconding while ago, seconding again.
I'll second it.
All right. Hit the button, please. Thank you. It been motion and second. Are we approve this? Is it all in favor of the motion? Four yes, okay. No, six yes, I'm sorry, I'm going to answer right. Six yes and one no, okay. All right, Ms. Emerson, you can keep going.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the next matter for zoning this evening is the introduction of case twenty-three SUP three thirty-seven. The applicant is Jonathan King. The property is tax map ninety-nine parcel eighteen. It is located in the Marshall District at one zero zero eight Little Creek Road. It's currently A-one agricultural zoning district. And the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of building and operating a private school, an Amish parochial school. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request. This case was introduced to the planning commission December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and a public hearing was held January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. The planning commission recommends approval of this case to the Board of Supervisors. Would it be the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing? If so, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four at six P.M. and our applicant is with us this evening.
Where's the applicant at?
In the audience. It's Mr. Jonathan King.
Come up here, sir. Where is he? I think some of the board members want to know where the school will be. They don't know exactly where it's.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for what you did. Little Creek Road. Trying to think.
Seven forty-three. Okay.
Go down six twenty-two.
Six twenty-two.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Six twenty-two, that's about, about a mile off, six twenty-two.
Okay, all right, I got you. You understand what he's saying? Anybody send a question for him?
No, sir.
Can we get a motion, set up public? Can we get a motion to set up public hearing for next month? What's your time you said, Nikki?
Six o'clock at March eleventh.
Six o'clock, March eleventh, okay.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
The motion is second and we will set up, set up a public hearing for March eleventh at six o'clock. All in favor? Thank you, sir. Seven yes, okay. Ms. Emerson?
Mr. Chairman, the next case before you is introduction of twenty-three SUP three thirty-eight. Your applicant is Eli Stoltzvis. The property where this request is, would be located is tax map sixty-nine parcel forty-nine, has just over ninety-four acres. It's at two five seven six six North James Madison Highway, New Canton in the Marshall District. It's currently zoned A-one. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of building and operating a commercial building to manufacture, repair, and sell parts, including but not limited to water pumps, plumbing, heating, propane, gas, air, and electrical appliances and parts, supplies with space for deli and sandwiches, and a food truck for food sales. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request.
What is the pledge of the board? No, this is setting the public hearing for next month.
I'll make a motion. That's in my district.
Okay.
It been motion, my, it been motion and second, we accept the public hearing for next month, six fifteen?
The clock.
Six o'clock. All right, six o'clock. All in favor? Yes, okay, Ms. Emerson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and the last case for introduction this evening is twenty-three SUP three thirty-nine. The applicant is Verizon Wireless and the property where this request would potentially be located if approved is tax map ninety-nine parcel forty-six, at just over eighty-three acres. It's at or near thirty-seven oh two Trent Mill Road in the Marshall District as well. This is an A-one agricultural zoning district. The request before you from Verizon Wireless is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of constructing a one hundred and ninety-nine-foot monopole communications tower. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request. And of course, it was introduced to the planning commission and a public hearing held and they recommend approval. We do have an Lori Schweller who is here via Zoom on behalf of the applicant. Should there be any questions? She's joining us virtually this evening, but the request is for a public hearing, March eleventh at six P.M.
It been motion and second and we will accept the public hearing for March the eleventh. All in favor?
It's in my district also.
Trying to keep you busy. Trying to keep you busy.
Well, you got the outside.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I believe it's Ms. Schweller.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is Lori Schweller. Sorry, I'm getting a little feedback. Just wanted to note that we have a few small requests regarding the conditions for the special use permit and wanted to ask if you would like me to raise those issues today or wait until March eleventh?
You can go ahead and answer your own line.
Thank you. So, so this proposed wireless facility is a monopole style and it's designed so that it would fall within the subject property. In other words, it meets all the county setbacks. So in the case of some disaster, if it were to fall, it would fall within the boundaries of the property. And so for that reason, it doesn't use what we call breakpoint technology. It wouldn't need to use that. And so we wanted to delete the requirement that it be certified to include breakpoint technology. That's in condition number five.
Ms. Schweller, we removed the breakpoint technology and deleted a couple of other conditions. So just want to remove the wording in, in this particular condition.
Yes, it's condition number five at the end of it to include breakpoint technology. And, and then the second one is condition number fifteen. State law provides that a locality may not require a wireless facility to be commenced sooner than two years from the date of approval. In other words, the validity period for the special use permit needs to last at least two years. So we just wanted to tweak that language to follow the state code, which says the construction of the tower must commence within two years from the date of approval and then be diligently pursued to completion. And that language more closely follows the code rather than the current language, which states that the construction of the tower must be diligently pursued within two years, which seems to require it to be completed within two years.
Okay.
Finally, number sixteen, I just wanted to point out if, if it's the pleasure of the supervisors that this hole be painted rather than be stainless steel, we just wanted to let you know that that's typically done in the factory before shipped and constructed. So they were not requesting to paint the tower. If that were your pleasure, we, we wanted to ask that it be a condition at the time of approval because it's not possible to paint it after construction and, and have a good quality of paint. I just wanted to make that note regarding number sixteen. And thank you for allowing me to make those comments and I'll continue to work with Ms. Edmondson on those conditions.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Ms. Emerson, you go ahead.
Okay, so did everyone understand those changes? These conditions actually came from the planning commission based on the last meeting where we did delete two conditions at Ms. Schweller's request and that was reviewed by legal counsel. The only, and I don't have a problem with breakpoint technology because of the setbacks. They're far away from all property lines per the state code and cityscape. Susan Raybold was here as well to concur as the city's, county's consultant. The only issue, number fifteen, was changed per legal counsel in regards to the diligently pursued. I will get with Mr. Wright and make sure that must commence and be diligently pursued within the two years is, does not compromise the county standards. And as far as condition fifteen, the painting, the color has been there since the wireless plans have been in place. We don't typically, historically, the county has not required a color. So you could remove, shall be painted a color if that would be your desire. And I will continue to work with Ms. Schweller as well.
My question would be, if you paint it before you put it up, isn't that going to require for it to be repainted every so often to keep it looking presentable?
No, Supervisor Palmer, you're probably asking the wrong question. I'm guessing it, asking the wrong person. I mean, I'm imagining that it comes with some type of.
I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is it's stainless steel. So if you painted a color over a period of time, you're going to have to repaint it.
I don't know what the technology is. Is it similar to a metal roof and they don't require? I, I cannot answer your question. I'm so sorry, but I'm happy to find out.
Makes a lot of sense to me.
You know, I'm just saying, if you paint it the first time.
I'd, you'd have to repaint it again.
You're going to have to paint it again, which is going to be very costly. If it's stainless steel, it's going to weather fine anyway and it'll dull down as, as time goes on. That's just my opinion. I guess that would be something that would be addressed during the public hearing.
And the remainder of the cell towers in the county now are not painted. So, yes, sir.
That's probably for that reason. I'm just guessing. I'm not an expert.
And I'm definitely not an expert on paint. But the proper change would probably be to match the state code where there wouldn't be a requirement, I don't believe, for any type of color.
Throwing it out there.
All right, item four, you got that? Yeah, item four, item, what's the?
I do have one more item.
Yes.
And this is a, this is a memo in regards to a zoning map amendment request that I have been asked about from an individual. Recently, the zoning office has received an inquiry from an individual regarding their desire to initiate a zoning map amendment on a property located in the northern end of Buckingham. This would be in the Marshall Magisterial District. This property is located in an A-one agricultural zoning district in the northern section of Buckingham along Route fifteen. The application would be to rezone from A-one agricultural to B-one business. Would it be the desire of the Board of Supervisors to have the zoning office accept this application and move forward to the planning commission for introduction, review, public hearing, and recommendation? The advisement of the Board of Supervisors is greatly appreciated.
Edmiston, is this the one that me and you talked about the other day?
Yes, sir, it is.
I make a motion that we set a hearing.
A second.
You mean, I'm sorry, take the application?
Go take the prob, with the process.
Motion and second and we will go, go with the process.
I'd like to talk about, I'd like to make some discussion about this before you go any further. I know you already got a motion.
Go ahead.
This, this stuff is in your zoning. It's already said that if they don't have a building that they're going to build, a construction of any type that they're going to build, we're not supposed to give it to them just to change it from an A-one to a B-one.
This is already a building there, Danny.
Huh?
This is already a building there. It used to be.
That ain't what's written down right here. It just says they're going to change an A-one to a B-one.
I'm telling you, there is a building already there that was a garage for years and years, but it has went dormant because it hasn't been a business for, for the last twenty-five years. It used to be H.L. Watson Service Station.
Is it going to be a business?
Right?
I'm sorry, repeat that, Mr. Davis, Supervisor Davis?
It's the building that's right down by the river that crawls from the racing gas place.
Crawls from racing fields.
The sunblock building you drove by going to work every day, H.L. Watson's old service station. This man has purchased that property and he wants to be able to do something with the building.
He should be grandfather, shouldn't he?
After, because it hasn't been a business so long, it diverted back to A-one.
Okay.
But I mean, what I was saying is, you know, just looking at this paper right here, it doesn't. It doesn't say a location. It just says an A-one to a, a B-one, which, which we've done that once before. And that, and to me, it's a schooling that we had on the planning commission that says that's the wrong thing to do.
And I think the reasoning behind what you're thinking is because I could have a piece of property and say, for instance, I hear through the grapevine that Wawa's coming to Buckingham. It's zoned A-one. I want to get it B-one because I'm, I'm going to have an option on selling this piece of property.
Exactly.
Which is basically, in my opinion, it's kind of same thing as bid rigging, but what he's explained to us, it's already an exist.
Wants to remodel the building, but he doesn't want to spend a bunch of money on the building if he can't get it rezoned back to B-one business.
So for clarification, I understand where you're coming from. I understand where he's coming from and that clarifies it.
Right. Well, I mean, I don't have that information. I don't have no information until he just darkened it.
So now we, so now we know. I mean, now we get it and it's not just somebody trying to increase the value of that property. That's what we're trying to prevent.
Right.
Yeah, if they go say they're going to build, you know, something's already built and they're going to do a business, then yeah, that's fine.
He has to put a new roof and all on it because it had the flat roof, all that's caved in, the walls and all the sunblock. And they ain't going nowhere. It's been there. It was there when my daddy was a teenager.
Where'd you say it was?
Russell Parish ran it out. Yeah, I'm just like the way you're talking about.
Where is it at?
Right down fifteen, right across from the racing gas place.
You should get to the old Riverside Restaurant.
Run it. It used to be H.L. Watson's building.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Right on top of the hill, soon as the hill coming from a bridge.
Oh, my gracious, the one all the way on top of the hill? Man, that used to be a store years ago.
Still a lift and all in the shop there, but the roof is caved in around the walls.
All the windows and doors are gone, yeah.
He doesn't want to spend a bunch of money on it if he can't get it rezoned back to business.
Yeah, well, I don't mind that if you got a business. I just, I just don't want to do it when you say you're just going to do it to have fun. You're not, you're not doing it.
My, my motion still stands to, for her to go along with the permit process and all.
We got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
All right, so y'all going back to the planning commission, which is good.
You'll say it again.
That's what it says right here.
They say say you again.
All right, let's move on. Department of the agency reports and items for consideration. Define as, consider proposal and contract with Robinson, Farmer, Cox, and Associates for the county caused allocation plan. What is the board's pledge?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'll speak a little bit about that. That cost allocation plan, all that is, is they come in, they look at the number of employees we have, a number of laptops, computers, and they, they determine what cost each department costs the county. This is very important when you get to social services and those departments that get state reimbursements and from federal monies. So they use this report to determine their formula for reimbursement. So they have to do this every year. And just closing in front of you is asking, do you want to do it for a one-year period or a three-year period? If you do it for three years, there's some savings going along with it, it's like five thousand. Heard that when you.
The three years, you save what?
It's thirteen thousand eight hundred, that's all.
If you, let me see.
Three years is thirteen five.
That's right.
Thirteen five, yeah.
So what's your recommendation? Go with three years?
Three-year one, yes, sir.
Do we get a motion to that fact?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
It been motion and second.
It'd be helpful.
Yeah, we do it all the time currently now, just their contract has expired.
All in favor of the motion? All in favor of the motion? Are you ready, gentlemen?
You got to hit yours.
I ain't knocking the hell out of these. When I watch them, I want to watch you do it.
Hold on, Dan, too many votes.
And then black that and come back in there. All in favor?
Defied by a person, but defied by a machine is bad, ain't it?
Look at here, can we raise our hand?
All of us done voted.
Yeah.
That's all right, all right.
There's seven yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, the farmers association want to use the industrial park for tractor pull again this year again on July the twentieth.
Make a motion, we do that.
Second.
Motion and second, we're granting permission to use the industrial park. All in favor? All right. Sheriff. Sheriff Key.
I, I'll second the same thing, Carl.
Oh, that's all he got? He gets one working, now it's working.
I'm not here to ask you for anything.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I simply want to transfer one of our surplus vehicles to the county administration. Ford Explorer Sport Utility, and I won't bother reading the VIN number to you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
We need a motion accepted?
I'll make your motion. Okay.
Motion and second, we accept this vehicle from the sheriff department. All in favor? That means, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Let's move down to end. Appointments to committee boards and agencies, planning commission, the reappointment of District Two Commissioner, Ms. Shoemaker.
Supervisor Chambers, I don't know the proper time because it expires, doesn't expire to April thirtieth. But I understand that Ms. Shoemaker is willing to serve again and I'm happy to have her. Do I need to do it now or wait till then?
We can do it now.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda for the work. Do it.
I'd like to ask the board to please extend Ashley Shoemaker to be on.
Reappoint her, reappoint her to the.
Reappoint on District Two Planning Commission.
It been motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion and second, reappoint Ms. Shoemaker to the District Two Planning, to represent District Two in the Planning Commission. All in favor? Thank you. All right. Seven yes. The extension leadership council, they got the dates and when it, or meeting and everything. We need a board member to volunteer for that. Anybody want to volunteer for that, the extension leadership council?
Is that the one she was speaking of earlier?
Yes, sir.
I can't do it on Thursday.
All right, I'll have to do it.
Okay.
Sorry.
Supervisor Allen, you gonna get a motion, put him on there?
I'll try to.
I'll second.
Motion and second, then we appoint Supervisor Allen to this position. All in favor? Seven yes. Crossroad Service Board, I'm going to be careful with this here in there. Consider appointment of board member to the Crossroad Service Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to serve on that.
I make your motion.
Put Mr. Davis on it.
Mr. Davis, and before, right before you vote, those meetings are the fourth Tuesday of each month at seven o'clock.
At night? Yes, I can make that.
It been motion and second that we appoint Supervisor Davis on this Crossroad Service Board. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Let's get some screen up.
All right. Alright, seven yes, okay. Um, county attorney matters.
Chairman, I have no matters this time.
County administrator?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any matters tonight. I just wanna point out for your other informational items that you have listed to, uh, we see Ms. Shoemaker graduating with his diploma he received. He worked hard for that and we appreciate it. It's gonna help his career here at the county, so we thank you.
Was, yeah.
Alright, it was right back there. Other board members?
Thank you, James.
Any other board member got anything to bring before the board for going to executive session? If not, then we need a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion. First.
Right here.
I s- oh, you gotta read it first?
I'm gonna read it, okay.
I'll second it.
We'll have to read, we have too much to read, isn't it?
Yeah, read the motion.
Read that.
Who made the motion? Mr. Davis.
Davis made the motion.
I suppose, we're supposed to read it. Supervision Actuations and Real.
Miss Salisbury, you leaving us?
I'm Miss Salisbury.
Good night, drive safely.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You know I love you.
With legal concerns and benefits of, by staff members and consultants pretending to the acts or preferable legality, we are such cons- considerations and Bennett briefings and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating and
The gain.
Litigation purposes of the public body, for this purpose of this subdivision pro- bel- pro-
Proper.
Means litigation that has been threatened or on which the public body and its legal concerns rep- responsibilities and basis to believe will be hence by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be, constitute, permit. Am I reading the right one? No, I'm reading, I should've read the other one.
Okay, go for it. Okay, I got.
Finish that one, go back.
I might actually go back and read one or something.
Oh, okay. Nothing in this subdivision shall be consulted, consent, to permit or console of the meeting ma- merely because of the attorney's representatives of the public body is in the intense intensity or the consideration of the matter, consulting on a matter, is consulting on a matter.
Read the code, please, two point two.
It says discussing and consideration of acquiring of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of the public heard re- real property where discussing in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
Those codes were two point two.
The old code, two point two, dash three seven one one dash three, and two two, three seven eleven point seven.
Thank you, sir. All in favor of the motion?
I'm sorry, I can't read y'all, I just can't read in front of people.
Oh, hell, probably. You done good. All in favor? Seven yes. Let's go into executive session, wind it up. Wind it up.